I just did it, just now. Okay, so if everybody please stand and join in the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I will act as the meeting chairperson until the board has elected a president for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Be it resolved on recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education of the Whitney Point Central School District approve the appointment of Stacy Black. The position of district clerk commencing immediately. The stipend for this position is seven thousand two hundred ten dollars. May I have a motion? Someone, thank you, Chris. In a second. I heard Tom. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
So. This isn't vote officially yet until he gets sworn in or not?
It does not because he's not sworn in yet, but you're still welcome to vote.
Oh.
We do have a form, so, yeah.
You can just say stuff so you can get in the room.
But it will be just a moment before.
Gotcha.
We get you, yeah, we have to, yeah. Stacy? Would you like to take your oath of office? Well, since you. Do you have it in front of you or do I have it?
I, Stacy Black, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of board trustee.
District clerk.
Yeah. Sorry, district clerk.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Um, we are now at the point where Stacy will administer the oath of office to all of the Board of Education members. I told you, Benny, it would be clear. So we'll do it all together?
Yes. And we'll have to do it again down that last slate, right? Doesn't do it for her.
Yes. But there's no, we can't continue if he does fine, yeah.
I state your name.
I, Stephanie Chappney.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of board trustee.
The duties of one more trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So, nobody leave tonight without signing her book? Yes. Because she gets really upset if we don't sign her book. You're the one that says.
Congratulations, everyone.
Yeah. Okay.
Officially welcome. Welcome again, but. It's all official.
Very good. See, we don't take long before you get, you logged in and signed on and you're all good to go. Okay, um. Election of board president. I nominate Stephanie Chappney. I would accept that. Is there a second? A second? Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Um, election of the vice president. I nominate Chris Woodall. I would accept that nomination. Do I have a second? A second. You agree. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Did anybody want either of those jobs?
I'm so being mentioned, so I'm fine.
I, I'm just, I'm just checking that if anybody else may have wanted to throw their hat in the air. Okay, so Stacy. We need to do. The oath of office for president and vice president. And we can do that. Imperatively, yeah.
I state your name.
I, Stephanie Chappney.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of.
The duties of a vice president, president.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Okay, we are moving right along. Um. So we have a nice long list of items under the consent agenda. Three pages later. Yes, we used to do all of these individually. Okay, um, may I have a motion? So move. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tom. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Um. District clerk Stacy Black will administer the oath of office to the appropriate appointees within one business day from the reorganization meeting. Now, okay, business days, when she, we got one, so I'm pretty much just doing. First to all, since I'm fine. I'm just putting my brain in order. But if people are off tomorrow. You can, you can do the oath of office the next time they were, right?
Not a lot of people are taking extended vacation. Some of them sure aren't really doing it.
Um, yeah, well. Approve the appointment of Coughlin and Gerhardt Law Offices as School District General Counsel of the Whitney Point Central School District for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. May I have a motion? Second, Tom, and then Chris.
You'll see that we try to go through these fast because we know them.
Well, and, and they're all, it is, I hate to say the word boilerplate, but they are boilerplate. Um, we have to approve them every year. It's not necessarily that we will use each of these different law offices. But it gives us the ability to, and they all specialize in different. Aspects of school law, so that gives us the options of. Dealing with somebody who specializes in one particular area. As opposed to somebody who maybe just has general knowledge and wouldn't have the specifics that we need with. So, doesn't guarantee we'll use them, but gives us the option. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Approve the appointment of the Law Offices of Von Schnodden and King as School District General Counsel of the Whitney Point Central School District for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. They have a motion?
Um.
Was that you, Molly? Thank you. And a second? Second. Thank you, Chris. Normally I also ask any questions or comments. But I'm going to assume that somebody's going to speak right up if they have a question or a comment as we go through all of these. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Appointment of Hancock, Eastbrook, L O P, Frank W Miller. Esquire of council as general counsel for specific matters of the Whitney Point Central School District for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. They have a motion, so move. Chris, and a second? Second. Thank you, Molly. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Prove the appointment of Harris Beach Attorneys at Law, P L L C, as School District Bound Counsel of the Whitney Point Central School District for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. They have a motion?
So move.
Thank you, Tom. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Um, approve. Of designate the following as official bank depositories of the Whitney Point Central School District for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. J P Morgan Chase, Citizens Bank, E-Bank, N B T Bank, and then T Bank. May I have a motion? So move. Thank you, Molly. Okay. Thank you, Chris. And again, we may not use all those banks and they all specialize in different things, but gives us that option. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, authorize the school district treasurer or deputy treasurer to invest for a period not to exceed one fiscal year. The balance of monies in any account which is on deposit when such balance exceeds the anticipated expenditure from such account for one month. All in accordance with section one, seven, two, three of the education law for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. They have a motion. So move. Thank you, Chris. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Benny. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Um, we have the following dates for, um. Board of Education meetings for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, August thirteenth, September tenth. October eighth, November twelfth, December seventeenth, January fourteenth. February eleventh, March eleventh, April fifteenth, May sixth and twentieth, June seventeenth. And next year our reorganization meeting will be on July first. Okay? May I have a motion? So move. Chris? And a second? Does that do it?
It's not going there, so, November twelfth.
No.
No.
Okay. Yeah. We have, I mean, that's.
The business. Yeah. Yeah, it was falling out of me, but.
And. Just for our new members' knowledge, there's one Monday we do, so you have to watch that one.
Is that the one in April usually? So we do a Monday? Sorry. Isn't it actually not on Monday this year?
Yeah, so it's not a Monday this year. Their meeting is on Wednesday, but she said that we could do ours on Tuesday as long as we. As long as when I send her our vote, I see that before the Wednesday.
That's cool. I like that. Very nice. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Health Insurance Consortium. We need a delegate. And just as a. Note of reference, um, we usually, um, for our alternate, we usually, uh, pick. The remainder of the board as it gives. More flexibility. Um, the health insurance consortium meets, not that bad, twice a year.
Two or three times, but it's a Friday night.
Meeting that. And, and don't you get an inner two with this one, or is this not the one?
Yeah, they're at Bosley's now, but yeah, they're, they're still catered by Bosley's.
Yeah, so if anybody would be interested, please speak now. I think Molly is begging to get off.
And nobody wants to. I did it my first year. I enjoyed it. I got to learn some faces.
So I will nominate Aubrey.
And that's a pretty good person to hang out with. Do we know the dates for these already?
No, not yet. Typically, they're, I think it's like. October, February.
But they give you advance notice. It's not like they're going to say, oh, by the way, we have our meeting next week.
It's not. And any other board member's allowed to go. It doesn't help to just to. Representative, but you're the voting member.
But you're the voting member, and if you're not able to attend, one of us, or any of us can go in your place and as many. But only one of us. Can be the voting winner. So like, we could all, seven of us decide to go to the meeting? Yeah. I, I, I know. Free dinner, you really, you know. But only one of us would be allowed to vote. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? We used to joke around that if you didn't show up for the reorg meeting, we'd get.
Yeah.
Appointed as the delegate to all of these. Um. Would somebody like to? Um, nominate our alternate?
I'll nominate the board as the alternate.
I'm sorry about that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Next we come to, um, the. From Taiga School Boards Association Legislative Committee. Are you still interested in continuing on with that? Is there anybody else who would be interested in doing that? Anybody else can shadow if you're interested, just so you know that. Um, again, we'll do the rest of the board as our alternate. And so I will nominate Chris. May I have a second?
Second.
Molly? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? You have to abstain when you're voting on yourself?
No, you can vote for yourself.
Oh, that's nice.
Oh, and all elections you can.
Vote for himself?
Everybody can write and vote for yourself.
Yes.
Unless you have a conflict of interest.
When you're good yourself, though.
My personalities are battling each other right now. Molly, how do you know? Me, the counselor knew it was watching me.
Okay, would somebody like to nominate our alternate?
I'll nominate the board as the alternate.
And a second? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain?
I'm sorry.
No, I know. I was just checking to make sure that it wasn't.
I'm so glad you put this on us. It's the first time we've added it to the reorg meeting, right?
I kind of sticky notes that to make you feel.
It's, it's curled and faded, but it was still there. Okay, the board will nominate and approve a voting delegate for the New York State School Boards Association, NISBA, annual business meeting. Who might be interested in that? Is anybody else interested in being the voting member for NISBA? Okay, would somebody like to nominate our interested party?
I'm gonna make Chris. I, I do encourage all of the board members, I'll let you hear your side.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Benny. You do encourage.
I do encourage when this all happens, the, um, they do, they have moved it to an online voting venue. Like, one year we were online for ten and a half hours, another year it was eight. So it's a very long, long meeting, but you learn a ton. So when it comes and we get the link, if you're interested in being part of the. Listening part and not voting part, please let me know, because it's really actually very informative to hear what happens.
I've, I've listened to bits and pieces over the last several years. I don't have the time to sit and.
Basically, it's how we vote for the things we want legislators to move forward for our school space.
Well, for NISBA too.
Yeah, and for NISBA.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Um, shall we do the rest of the board as our alternate? I nominate so.
Second.
Thank you, Molly. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Continuation of participation in the New York State Public Schools statewide workers' compensation trust and designation of W P C S D representative. Be it resolved upon recommendation of the superintendent of the Board of Education of the Whitney Point Central School District. Approve the following resolution of school districts relating. To the participation in the New York State Public Schools statewide workers' compensation trust. Whereas the Whitney Point Central School District is a member of the New York State Public Schools statewide workers' compensation trust. And inter municipal cooperative activity organized and operated pursuant to section one, one, nine dash oh. Of the general municipal law here and after the plan. And whereas the Board of Education of the Whitney Point Central School District. Has determined that it is in the interest of the Whitney Point Central School District. To continue to participate in the plan for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. Now therefore be it resolved that Zachary Woodard, school business executive, be and hereby is designated to represent the Whitney Point Central School District. In connection with his participation in the plan and to attend and vote in person or by proxy at any meeting of the members of the plan. May I have a, a motion? So move. Thank you, Chris, and how about a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tom. Is it pest control officer this year? So you're, you're okay.
Take this one, I guess.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Be it resolved upon recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education of the Whitney Point Central School District. Authorizes the superintendent of schools or designating to approve requests to employ personnel on the temporary, part-time or per diem or substitute basis. And to set the appropriate wages for such personnel during the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. May I have a motion?
So move.
Thank you, Molly. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Benny. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Be it resolved upon recommendation superintendent that the Board of Education of the Whitney Point Central School District. Authorize Joanne Sexton, superintendent of schools, Shannon Kohler, assistant superintendent, or Zachary Woodard. School business executive to approve requests from the professional and the non-teaching staff to attend conferences, institutes, or workshops. Within the budgetary allocations for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. May I have a motion? So move. Chris, and a second?
But.
Tom? I'm gonna get you guys buzzers. All those in favor?
Can I?
Oh, yeah, sure.
I think I asked this last time, Zach, but I can't remember. Are we? Are we covered under this one? The board members, we go to conferences?
Yeah, again, technically you would need the approval of West thirty to.
Okay.
But it's also within.
Budgetary too.
Yeah.
Yeah, budgetary. And we, I know we're going to discuss as a board what we want to do that, but I just want to.
Thanks. But. Zach always says no.
He does not.
Yes, his first, his response, his first response is always, no.
Just like insurance companies.
Yeah. Cause someone that Tiana did. Sorry.
Okay, I, I appreciate Zach working with all of us. I mean, always a bunch of numbers.
I know. He, he does safeguard the funds of the district, and so his first reaction should be.
Let me check on things. That's what his first reaction usually is.
No, usually it's no, and then it's free. Let me check on things.
We just wear it again.
Can we finish? This one, and Tiana, you can't vote on this one because you're not sworn in yet, but then you can. Be included on everything else.
Yes, thank you.
We're on page something I don't know.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay. Thank you so much. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Now Tiana gets to do her oath of office with Stacy.
Thank you guys so much. I apologize.
It's, you don't have to apologize. We get it.
You gotta get the right one, man.
I state your name.
I, Tiana Mosman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of board trustee.
The do, the duties of board trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability. Thank you. Authorize that checks be signed with a facsimile signature. Or reproduced by a check signer or other machine by the treasurer or by the deputy treasurer in the absence of the treasurer. Whose signatures may be required during the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. They have a motion? So move. Chris, and a second?
Second.
Molly? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? And Tiana, as we go through this first part, I'm not. Going to. I'm not asking my, the usual, you know, any questions or comments, but if you do have a question, just speak right up.
Alrighty, thank you.
But. This is, you know, the part where we just want to get it done, let me get to the.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, being resolved that the president or in their absence, the vice president of the Board of Education of the Whitney Point Central School District. Broom County, New York, shall be and hereby is empowered and directed to authorize the issuance and to issue bond anticipation notes. Tax anticipation notes, revenue anticipation notes, capital notes, statutory bonds, and budget notes of this school district. And renewals of any and all such notes at such times and under such circumstances as they deem proper and advisable. And to prescribe the terms, form, and contents thereof to execute the same in the name of and on behalf of the school district. And to sell at private sale and deliver the same. And the full faith and credit of said school district are hereby pledged to the punctual payment of the principal of the interest. Of and. Interest on all notes issued pursuant heretofore by said president. All in pursuance and consistent with the provisions of the local finance law of the State of New York. They have a motion? So move. Thank you, Chris. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Benny. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Affordable Care Act resolutions. Whereas the Whitney Point Central School District maintains a group health plan for its employees' health plan. And whereas the Whitney Point Central School District is required to offer coverage under its health plan to eligible full-time employees pursuant. To the Patient Protection and Affordable Care Act, A C A. And whereas the Whitney Point Central School District employs persons for variable hours whose full-time status must be determined. Pursuant to guidance issued under the A C A. Now therefore be it resolved that the school district hereby is authorized and directed to establish and maintain. Procedures for the purpose of compliance with the A C A, including but not limited to the following. For variable hour employees, the Whitney Point School. Whitney Point Central School District shall establish a twelve-month standard measurement period. Beginning July first, twenty twenty-four, and ending the following June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. The initial measurement period for new variable hour employee shall be the twelve-month period beginning on the date of hire and ending on the anniversary date thereof. The administrative period following the standard measurement period is the period beginning July first, twenty twenty-five, and ending August thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. The administrative period for new variable hour employee shall be the thirty-day period following the anniversary date. And the stability period during which time the variable hours employee's status as eligible or ineligible for health plan coverage is fixed. Is the period beginning September first, twenty twenty-five, and ending August thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Be it further resolved that the school district is authorized and directed to take such actions as determined necessary. Or proper to give effect to this resolution. They have a motion?
So move.
Thank you, Tom.
Second.
Thank you, Tiana. I just have one question. You say bullet number three. Why is that? Lap differently, July first to August thirty-first?
Like you're setting the administrative period to look back on hours for all employees. Okay, so we already had that, uh, previous lookback for last year. This is the administrative period to determine if anyone would be eligible. We're setting next year's period, which would be July one through June thirtieth, and then next year's administrative period would be then.
Okay, thanks.
But this resolution's really, again, boilerplate, uh, that we've had no one since, uh, the Affordable Care Act have gone. Into legislation, actually. Have to.
You better knock on wood right now.
Get affordable, uh, or health insurance to be exchanged, because again, the district offers a better richer benefit.
Okay, thanks. I was just curious why there, that's that little lap. I just noticed it. Thanks.
Yep.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Authorize the superintendent to sign agreements to continue to participate in the school lunch program. And hereby authorizes the superintendent, school business executive, and or the school lunch director. And to sign any reports as required by governmental agencies for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. They have a motion?
So move.
Thank you, Tiana. And a second?
Second.
Molly? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Whereas there are times the district may issue an erroneous tax bill due to clerical or arithmetic. arithmetic error and holding the correction to the next bold. arithmetic error and holding the correction to the next bold Board of Education meeting may result in an overpayment by the taxpayer or an underpayment to the district and whereas the district seeks the most efficient and expedition. I cannot say that word. I am sorry. Means of correcting the tax bill. Now therefore be it resolved that upon recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education of the Whitney Point Central School delegates authority to the central business office, CBO, and/or Zachary Woodard, school business executive, to make corrections up to two thousand five hundred dollars in erroneous property tax bills. They have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Tiana. And a second? Thank you, Chris.
And whatever corrections are made by CBO or myself, they would then still come to the board after the fact for review. Really, we kinda got stuck with this. In order for the tax bills to be amended and it's kind of misleading when it says clerical arithmetic, it could be anything from the assessor not having the right assessment or star value on a tax bill to, you know, higher cultural exemptions being dropped, not dropped, but, you know, they're pricing to be in back to those people. And technically, we can't, the county wouldn't release new tax bills until the board through. This resolution lets us kind of, you know, expedite that so we can get those people, you know, paid up and in the board, you know, the correct bill to pay out.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? The Whitney Point Central School District requires that the persons appointed to the positions specified below be covered in the identified amounts by the Whitney Point Central School District. Furthermore, all other Whitney Point's Central School District employees be covered with a blanket honesty policy at one hundred thousand dollars per employee. School business executive, one million dollars. Tax collector, one million dollars. Internal claims auditor, one million dollars. Treasurer, one million dollars. Benefit coordinator, one million dollars. Treasurer, CBO, two hundred fifty thousand. Auditor, CBO, two hundred fifty thousand. May have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Tiana. And a second? Thank you, Chris. This is basically bonding those employees so that if something happens, the district is covered.
Yeah, the terminology is kind of like antiquated. It even still bond employees, but it's way more of a process to get that certified insured. So we wrap this around in our insurance policy that is the annual renewal. It's way easier and it's the same coverage.
Go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
Definitely question. I know we're bonded as board members too, am I correct?
That's an interesting one because again, definitely not employees of the district. I'm not sure how that works.
Maybe for our reorg meeting, I would love to know that how that works. I know we're protected.
You mean our retreat?
Our retreat, yeah, our retreat, not this.
Um, yeah, I'd love to know what that is.
I do know that we're protected, but I don't remember how. And I don't either.
I know we would defend, honestly, anything legally that was brought against you, but I don't want specifically for this resolution because you're not technically employed with the district.
Some do pay their board members. We just don't, so. Well, thanks.
Your district and your state.
Oh, yes, yes, there's five districts that pay. School board members.
Okay, um, we are going to readapt as a whole for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. All policies previously adopted by the Board of Education for its governance and operation is stipulated by the district policy manual. They have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Chris. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tiana. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any abstain? Board acknowledges the receipt of the following policies for annual review. Five-two-two-zero, district investments policy. Five-four-one-zero, principles of purchasing procurement policy. And seven-three-one-zero-point-one, school conduct and discipline. School lunch pricing for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year through participation in the community eligibility provision. Breakfast is free and lunch is free. May have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Tiana. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Benny. This is the one that's like out of five-year rotating. So basically every year that we qualify extends us out.
Yeah.
Another five years.
So BOSIs, they'll do that calculation as long as we still are equitable and follow parameters and make it profitable. Then they always will renew it. So it's a five-year max period that you can have that authorization for.
So if we just you know. If, if, if. Uh, no, that wasn't what I was thinking. So if for some reason we qualify for this school year, it now goes out five years. What happens if next year we don't qualify? Does that mean we're still in under the five years, but it doesn't extend another year?
Correct. We just would stop renewing it. But we still could get the, that benefit over four years.
Okay. That's what I thought, but I just, I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, again, obviously if that were the case, we have a larger discussion.
That's what I said, get rid.
Right, yeah. Okay. The non-resident student tuition rate for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year is follows. Zero dollars for grades K through six.
This is what the state.
Oh, I'm sorry, the date. Thank you, Molly.
No, I was talking about.
The breakfast and lunch, but I apologize. Sorry. Thank you. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Thank you.
Sorry.
No, no, you should.
If we don't vote on it, it wouldn't benefit.
No, we would be holding a special meeting to vote on it so that it would be, you know. Non-resident student tuition rate for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Zero dollars for grades K through six, two thousand three hundred seventy-seven dollars for grades seven through twelve. They have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Tiana. And a second?
Rumbling, second. So this is the calculation we get every year.
This is the safe formula. I think that's the opportunity for you guys to discuss the policy later.
Yeah, yeah, now that we know what the number is for this year.
Yeah, but again, if you don't want to prove this theory, I think you can table it out for that discussion.
Yeah.
But do we have a choice? Aren't we prescribed by what the state comes up with as the amount? Isn't that what?
Recommendation, what you should be charging.
Can't, you can't charge more. So for the younger. I had some consideration, but you can't charge more. They're not the state. Calculates if you can charge less or you cannot accept.
Okay, so by approving.
Based on our policy. Because essentially, that's the money we're gonna, we're getting.
Right.
I mean, that probably should cost us, so you can't, it's public education. So if you're, if you're gonna have a policy where you're gonna accept students and you can't make, you can't be a money maker.
Yeah.
And you also can't discriminate.
Right.
Kind of the thing. So you can't like if a particular child may cost more, you can't charge them.
Right. So should we, in our discussion, should we choose to review our policy and change or adjust our policy for non-resident students? It doesn't have, it's not, there's no effect if we approve this right now because. Okay.
Well, I guess there, we're going to not accept it, probably be accepted.
Right, um. Well, there's a number of things that we can talk about, but if we don't accept non-resident students. So there's two things. So some districts will have, and they don't accept a non-resident students. Except if you're an employee.
Right, right.
And then they have a tuition rate for employees. Some have a tuition rate for employees and then waive the tuition rate. So there's a number of things that you can do. So doing this doesn't necessarily cause a problem.
Right, it's not gonna cause us a problem because all we're doing right now with this is just approving the rate that's been provided to us by the state. We're not, we do want to talk about our policy, but we don't need to talk about it in this piece. Is that correct?
Yes.
The rates can be lowered, they can't be higher. So this is just.
This is just letting us know what it is for the year.
We can waive zero. Sorry.
Being talking. You're being sassy. She could be insulting. And I'm the margarita in the middle.
Okay, on that note, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Establish the mileage reimbursement rate at the amount allowable according to the rules and regulations of the Internal Revenue Service for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. We have a motion? Thank you, Chris. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tiana. All those in favor?
Aye. I have a couple of questions for Zach. Zach, have they made the P twelve environment start requiring to use rental cars if it's cheaper than the mileage rate? Expenses yet?
Nope, I haven't heard anything on that. Basically, we still get the recommendations from Questar about the mileage rate adjustments, which makes me think. That's probably statewide for the schools.
Okay, I didn't know if P twelves, I know higher education, we're mandated to look at a rental car and see if it's cheaper than using our own vehicles now. So.
Yeah.
So what is the mileage rate?
Sixty-seven cents.
Sixty-seven cents.
It's, it's gas plus.
Okay, that's all my question. I just wondered if P twelve's about thirty at the end of the day.
We used to like change. Like have to calculate it ourselves. And so probably ten or more years ago, we went to just using the IRS rate.
Yeah, and I mean, technically, everyone's supposed to request or at least ask for a school-provided car. And if it's not available, then they would be allowed to claim mileage for certain. Again, now just arrangements where it doesn't make sense to do that. And some of those are just like literally like driving from the elementary school to an off-site provider to provide financial services.
Thanks. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, the following job titles requiring district-owned cellular phones, the cellular phone contract is included in a service purchase from Broom Toyota BOSIs for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Bus garage, five. Maintenance A, three. Maintenance grounds, two. Maintenance worker, one. Maintenance supervisor, one. Maintenance mechanics, two. Transportation supervisor, one. Principals, three. Assistant principals, three. Superintendent, one. Assistant superintendent, one. Director of Special Services, one. Athletic Director, one, and Safety Coordinator, one. They have a motion? Thank you, Chris. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tiana. We didn't used to use as many cell phones as we do now, but in realization that many people use their cell phones for doing business and it makes it more secure in that somebody's personal cellphone doesn't get used to access school tool or anything like that. So it makes it more secure. Of course, it means that they carry around two cell phones, but
it, it also, you know, because all of these people are like on-call people.
Yeah.
They don't work just to shift. And I mean, they, we need to reach them all the time. And so for their protection, but also we need find out what happened or didn't happen or whatever. It's on our device.
Yep, yeah. Why is the S O R, S R? Thank you. So they, they also have job-related ones that's supposed to use either person.
They have county dogs.
Yeah.
I knew I had asked that last year and I was hoping somebody would ask it again this year.
Well, I thought we hadn't. I couldn't remember the answers.
Thanks. Any other questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Approve the following credit cards for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Wegmans, five hundred dollar credit line. Wex Bank, which is Speedway, seventeen thousand two hundred dollar credit line. Sam's Club, eleven thousand five hundred dollars. Elon Financial Services, NBT Bank, five thousand dollars. They have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Tiana. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Benny. Any questions?
So we're not using Vernon Dairy's gas station yet at all? Just see lots of places there.
They like their breakfast in.
Well, they're there all the time. I love it. It's a big parking lot. It's a big parking lot. So I was like, did we start using?
They used to all be a Speedway, but yeah.
They're better.
Yeah. It is better.
You get a whole pizza Friday, Saturday, and Sunday for nine ninety-nine.
Okay, that's, here it is. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay.
Safety plan.
Yep, the district-wide safety plan hearing is called to order at six forty-eight P M. Zach, you're up.
Right.
Have you all read this?
Oh, yeah.
I think everyone got one. Before the meeting started. I'm just gonna show you, because again, so what we're going through is a district-wide safety plan. This is a public document. Each building has their own building-wide safety plan. That of course, due for confidentiality and, you know, wanting to have some, obviously, privacy in those plans so they don't get out in the wrong hands. We keep those confidential, but this is the generic thing that is on our website. But then I want to look at it. I just want to show you where it is. There's our lovely webpage. If you go to the local district, scroll down. And then we will have it somewhere near the school safety. So this is gonna be the one that was approved last year at the reorg meeting. It's late, but I must be right. And so what we'll do is, after I go through the proposed changes for this year's plan, we will upload this to the website. We have a thirty-day review period. Basically, there's a section on the website where people can make comments or they can contact the school. And then what we'll do is, at the next meeting in August, thirty days will have elapsed. Then we'll bring you any additional changes or we'll approve the new safety or buy safety plan with these changes. And then it gets uploaded to S E D. And again, S E D needs to have it, but we also give it to the local enforcement.
So can I just also add that this plan is really very generic because obviously any real emergency protocol that would happen would not be public, would not be you know, house for everybody to see. So the buildings are, they're very specific.
All right, so, and there's a little cheat sheet on these. So again, as John said, it's kind of generical. What we do to kind of keep track year to year and how you're required to do these, if you go to the very end. And it's page fifty. You'll see that we start to track all the revisions made. Or actually, it's.
Fifty-five is this year. Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know where revisions one through seven went. That's a good question. Left it looking at that. But that's hold on.
Yeah, fifty-five.
Yeah, we'll have another change at the next meeting when I figure that one out. That's okay. We'll focus on today's changes. Which again, start on page fifty-five.
Yes, you highlighted all the changes throughout.
Yep.
Done, yeah, that's right.
And then they're all.
They usually have them listed, so he just said.
No, just, yeah, the first seven revisions are, are missing from the list, but everything is for revision twenty-seven, which is this year, is here.
So it looks like it probably somehow dropped off a page somewhere.
I see.
Yeah, this document, I don't know, it's been formatted twenty-seven times. We'll figure that out. Okay, we'll let you know in August where that went. But right now, we're gonna go through, again, those changes, revision number twenty-seven. If you go to the beginning of the plan, and again, we try to highlight them. And some of these, you don't know, in the past year, I think we mentioned a lot of these are grammatical changes or name changes, appointment changes. And then again, we also have policy changes that would be incorporated and S E D tells us additional things that this is, this year, they want to see these in our, our district-wide safety. So first change, going to page four. Now the state said, again, we need to have these new definitions, these new keywords identified and describe what they are. There also is now a reporting aspect. Reporting aspect of how we're supposed to be letting our families know how we do our safety drills. Um, so I know that's something that Joanne, uh, me and Carrie have been talking about and, um, yeah, I think you'll see more communication and. Uh, letting that be known, how we conduct those.
So the the um, and and Carrie Godley, who is um managing our safety, uh. Everything really, she's, you know, been hired and she's grant-funded. Um, she goes to training in person with the state regularly. So she stays abreast of all this and like, like Zach just said, a lot of these changes are handed about this. Some of them, you'll see, we'll talk about our changes that we made to improve safety, um, that we got through a number of different brands that we.
So when you say, um, the state has changed the way, or they want us to change the way we notify parents?
So parents are now going to be notified when we have.
So beforehand?
Yes.
Because of trauma that was happening.
Yeah. That you add in this language, what the school districts know what trauma is and and the impacts, these kind of, you know. Protocols, which is a very different stance than than has happened before.
And then you do have now, from the splitter.
Six drills.
We have eight.
We have eight fire drills and four lock, uh, yeah, lockdown drills.
In each building.
And we tried to vote legislation to make that a little less, but I didn't.
It's a lot. And again, you try to tweak something in each other drills, so they're not the exact same scenario, but you kind of want it to be, you know, uh. In the event you really have a emergency fire drill, you know what to do. And that's kind of what they were trying to do with the lockdown drills.
Um, you want it to be automatic behavior for the students and the staff, but.
So you spread it out across the day usually then, different times.
Different times.
For the four times.
Yeah, I gave her a try to not have anything to click with plus duty time, just because that's a whole other headache, but.
But something could happen during bus. To do about it.
Right, yeah.
Um, but yeah, I mean, and again, it's funny, because every year, kind of, you get the change at. At, they're like one-eighties occasion, right? So when you talk to law enforcement, um, sometimes they want to come in, they don't want to tell anyone, including staff, what's going on.
Yeah.
That's where you got some of these uh things that seem a little bit more um concerning and obviously certain uh populations can, you know, uh, be affected more. So I think what they're trying to do is to still have everyone be as well-trained and prepared, but be a little more sensitive for for some of that other stuff.
Though we do have plans of course for if there is something during dismissal time.
Oh, yeah.
But, yeah.
Yeah, and again, every building has a building.
Yeah.
Uh, wide plan, which is gonna be more detailed.
Right.
You know, exactly where to go. But we don't want that out.
No, no, yeah.
Um, okay, so again, that's probably the biggest change, honestly, what we're gonna talk about. Uh, so that 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 was it, um, page four. Uh, again.
Oh, is green state requirement and yellow something different? So I see you've used two colors.
No, um, not sure whether it's different color, but I'm just bringing bringing attention to, yeah. We we more colorful, I guess.
I love it. I love this color. I always had color feeling.
Next game, page nine, again, uh, what happens when you have a very specific information, listen to annual plan. I was updating the student counts for the buildings. Um, and also next year, we know perfect, we are removing. Uh, one of our off-site locations, that would bring it up here in our brickage classroom, so that's a good change. Um.
So we're taking this out. We've said, yeah, the numbers. So maybe that's it. Maybe the yellow is takeout and we're reading that in.
But they don't take out, they're just updated.
Okay, we have to update it every year.
I still want, we can share this.
Okay.
Yeah.
He's just, he's just showing you every year he has to update it and that's the new information.
Um, going down page eleven, uh, again, uh, trying to keep up with current titles, um. Because again, uh, titles change, people change, uh, safety coordinator was a position, uh, we technically didn't have a few years ago. We have, uh, as Joanne said, now dedicated safety coordinator slash grant coordinator, the D O. Uh, she's actually the one that went through and made a lot of these changes and put these lovely colors in here.
Nice.
Um, I'm giving her the benefit of trying to go through those and not make mistakes, so I'm doing my best here.
You're doing good, Zach.
Alright, alright, moving along. Um, so again, we added that position. Then we had to add a description of what the safety coordinator actually is, um, and they, from the reorg uh meeting. Uh, and that concerned agenda, uh, I am the wonderful chief emergency officer, but believe me, uh, the Joanne superintendent, Shannon are way important. So I don't like that title, but that's where that is under the safety coordinator and whom she reports to. You also see that reference throughout. It's really a S S E D designated title that someone has to have, so I inherit that. Uh, Bill Dean retired and Nigel Perry, that seems to sign up to worry about that fancy title. Going through. Uh, page fourteen, um, again, this was a policy we went through where we had to add in the workplace violence, um. Policy, uh, this was something that the state required. Uh, again, previously, all government uh organizations and, I think, private industries had to have. A violence, uh, workplace violence prevention policy in place. Schools were exempt for whatever reason. Uh, we went through that, uh, over a few meetings and talked about the process. We had the policy developed and then again, we've had it brought up. Into our internal, um, uh, the meeting group, uh, brought the safety committee. Uh, again, just trying to go through and make sure we have our checklist, um, you know, crossed and and everything is in compliance where it needed to be. It was a very aggressive deadline. But so again.
Trained everybody.
And we trained everyone, yep. Uh, so again, that was all stuff put together this year, which again, has to make its way into the the safety plan. Uh, it's sixteen. I know I'm going a little quick, but uh, please, yeah, I'm just gonna. Uh, next one, I think, um, Joanne, you may want to talk a little bit more about this one.
Why?
So as part of, again, we we have a couple of safety grants that we've gotten. Um, but through one of them, we uh purchased this P three tip line. There's not, there's a couple of software um packages that we have that. Um, monitor uh computer use for, you know, concerns or threats, um, but also this P three stuff. Tip line is one of them. We used to have it just like a Google form on our, on our website. It sounded like we didn't have anything before. But this is a much more sophisticated, um, program, um, that we use now. And so it's called P three and we. Get people using it with all kinds of dangers.
Thank you. And again, that's a problem. You like specify a very specific software. In a few years, it's gonna change to something newer and better. You're gonna have to update that again. But right now, it's on uh P three dip line and I think. I can find the website here, show you where it is. And it's very, very convenient, very easy. We have posters throughout the district that tell students that they can. Report something, uh, again, since they have them to do it. And it goes to, uh, I know a few people immediately at court.
The. The posters around the district, or do they just have the link or do they have a Q R code that the students can?
Down, um, again, I think this goes to adding that uh definition of the trauma, trauma-informed, trauma-informed drills. This is where that section of the plan gets updated. Uh, talks about the notification, um, again, what we're talking about, Molly. Um, if you can see where I got incorporation of the plan. That's okay.
I got it.
Uh, so here we go. Again, this is what we talked about in the basement drills. Um, this is what we're adding. Whitney Point, uh, hasn't will follow the secrets known by parents or persons in relation of any of the drills that this is told. Uh, we will ensure, again, we're so, um, internally discussing the best way to do it. Um, but we will be making those changes, uh, obviously for this year. Uh, drills and training will be conducted. And again, here's the definitions we we identify. Uh, drills and training, uh, be conducted in trauma-informed development in an appropriate manner. Drills and training, we've done props, actors, simulations, or other tactics. Again, trying to not scare our our student by.
Just just to matter of record, we have not ever done that, but other districts did. And I had mock scenarios where, um.
You know, there's very.
We, we do first aid stuff. A lot of times they do that. I remember doing some right down. Uh, at the Red Cross, it was right across the street from Seton. And you couldn't believe how many people were stopping going, oh my gosh, what's going on? Are you guys okay? And I was like. Yeah, it was nice to see.
Proponent of doing it, uh, obviously with the older kids, with the little ones, I'm not sure with the trauma.
I mean, the kinds of things that were happening, they were coming in with like, like really like mock scenarios and gunshots.
Oh, yeah, that is, that's much. That's a little too much, but it does help prepare the kids, but we don't want to traumatize them either.
That's the reason why the state has changed their standards, because they feel like that, you know.
That some people took it.
Too much reality.
Yeah, they took it kind of to the extreme.
Yeah, so I guess I have a question now, thinking about it more. So if the parents are notified, how are they notified? I mean, that that.
I don't think they figured it out yet.
We, well. It's gonna, it could be real specific, but then that defeats the purpose of doing a drill at times, because, so.
Yeah, again, it's kind of a fire drill thing, right? Like, okay, everyone knows how we've all been through fire drills. You do it so many times, it's it's, you know, you don't think about it, you just act. I think that's kind of where you want to get with these, um.
Well, no, but I mean, it says you have to notify the parents, so you just notify that we will be doing this level, this level. Same days and what the level is.
Yeah, I mean, so the idea is that they're moved from, like, everybody thinking, you never know, this could be really an emergency. To just practicing what you do in an emergency and not making it a surprise. And really focusing on having kids, you know, this is a drill, but. But you really need to pay attention and this is serious, because it, you know, it could be someday that this is a real emergency. And I mean, it's a, it's a pretty dramatic shift, because it used to be we weren't supposed to tell kids it was a drill. And, um. You know, and I mean, again, we did, we didn't do things, but along those lines, we have had people come in and consult us. And say, you really should be doing that, because kids, you know, they need to be.
So are we, oh, now, are are we just allowing then the parents to tell the children that there's going to be a drill? Or will we notify them the morning of the day in the day that we have a drill? Are you doing both?
So we're, so we're gonna let parents know that. Question is, do we send an email? Because not everybody gets their email. But if you send a text alert, then people get really concerned. Or they've been desensitized to to text alerts, so there's, we're trying to figure out what the best way to do it. Is, yeah. And we also, there's a little bit of a problem, because. Like, you don't want to let, you know, I understand this shift, but you don't want to let too many people know, because sometimes people can take advantage of this situation. Yeah, you know, and, um, you know, unfortunately, in the world, so. We're, I mean, we're gonna try and word something to parents to say that we don't want to broadcast this wi- widely, but you may want to have a conversation with your child.
Right, we don't want them posting it on social media.
And we don't want.
There's gonna be a lockdown today.
We certainly don't want, like, somebody that's, you know, mound head to say, oh, there are, you know.
So is this a good idea at all?
Drill, but it's not really.
I mean, I don't think it is. Do you? I mean, I just, there are some children who do have a lot of trauma. Who've dealt with things, and maybe they shouldn't hold, but overall, is this a good idea?
Well, I guess it comes down to how soon the notification is prior to the event. If you say on a Friday, next week, we're gonna be having a a a fire drill, a lockdown drill, whatever. Yeah, so the parents know they can have the discussion, but.
I don't think it's, yeah, I don't think that's a not bad sp- specific day, do you, Joanne?
No.
So that's what I was asking.
It can be somewhat vague, but you're still doing the notification as requested.
Be like, oh, by the way, tomorrow we're doing one, but it can be like the week before.
Talk with your kids, because next year, next week, we're going to have.
Yeah, we're not gonna say, uh, you know, some, you know. Uh, A A M. Or, yeah, whatever, I mean, but it's still, there's still concerns in both directions. Like, what's the best approach? Yeah, because of the realities of the world that we live in. You don't obviously want to traumatize kids, but you gotta be realistic about.
I mean, we even, past year or two, started announcing before the drill, but this is a lockdown drill, this is a drill. Um, really, just kind of reiterate that in high school building, just so the kids are aware. And so pay attention, you know, you're gonna have to. Be quiet and released by, you know, the inference board S R O, but, um, again, we, and again, despite some law enforcement advice. They don't want you to tell people that it was drilled previously. So we did take that approach a year or two, while they kind of make that transition, just so we didn't have this issue. So again, I think, you know, we were told to incorporate this in our policy, which is what we're doing. But now, I think we were, we were being pretty sensitive already to it.
Oh.
But again, it's just a formality thing that we have to have.
I I know at the college, we get that recording that says, this is a drill. And so we know that, but if it's not saying this is a drill, we also know you better put yourself in tight gear right now.
Um, and again, I.
Yeah, we're, I mean, we're gonna, go back to the other people there. It says, you know, the district was gonna file a speech for training written sent for students to stay in full-scale exercise and conduct. And vocal and pass, but we have not done this either with kids. You know, we do tape top drills, but that is. So if we wanted to have like a mock scenario with, just, you know, some SWAT team coming, I mean, I mean, we've not done that. But we would obviously have to have, get consent for anybody to.
So if you wanted to, it's just written in there. If you were to do it, you need written consent. It's not saying we're gonna do that.
And in some places, some schools have done that with some, some students as volunteers. More, uh, honestly, a trained staff with having students there.
Yeah.
Um, so.
Alright, how do you lock down a room? Like, I mean, I've seen lots of videos, but how do you really do it?
And how do you?
Off somebody and rip it around that thing.
Right, and how do you barricade? I mean, there's, I've seen a lot of videos, but until it actually happens, how do you do it? It's just something that, I, and I don't know if you guys, I I'm pretty sure it's been shared, but I know a lot of the, um, capital project included. Um, a lot of the glasses now, um.
Yeah, we're always.
Bullet, I don't know if it's bulletproof or resilient. Okay, there you go. That's the word. Resilient. So those are all good things to know, though. I'm sure.
Yeah.
The staff.
In the first two days, when the school comes back, uh, for the staff, we always incorporate some form of, uh, like lockdown shooter training.
Okay.
Just as a reminder to all staff. And actually, it is pretty impactful, I think, when.
Good.
Throw some videos up there and, um, those are the things that stand out most to me. I remember first.
Yeah.
Those trainings.
Yeah, the shooter one is a good one.
Training for the substitutes as well.
We have basic training for them, which is just, you know, I mean.
One of my first time stepping in the elementary and music.
Yeah.
And I have this playing the music, and even here, over the intercom. Anyway, that's personal story.
Yeah, that.
I've also locked down before, so. That doesn't surprise me.
The principal came, there's like, for all the lockdown, like, what? It was playing the music and we were dancing and singing and I'm like, oh my god.
But like, that guy, Naomi, was there. She was able to shut up.
Not letting people know. I I've been in schools and basically, you can tell something's happening. There are people walking around, they have radios, all kinds of stuffs going on. It's like, oh, I'm not gonna do my program today. I'm gonna be sitting in the classroom.
So you have a pretty good idea which students are the ones that are gonna be affected by this. Wouldn't it be good just to go to them maybe? Ten minutes before it happens to let them know that it's gonna happen?
Well, I mean, again, even, I mean, we don't, we don't shock the the kids.
You know what I mean? Because that would be, seems to me like that would be part of the trauma was all of a sudden, but if maybe. Pull them aside, that way the, even the parents wouldn't have to know.
Well, we, we can.
Yeah, I see.
Yeah.
Well, exactly saying, we were already saying it was a drill when we were announcing it.
Yeah.
You were doing that before, so the kids will know it's a drill.
And that's a tough thing, right? Like, I, I'm sure there's advocates that say, eh, those are the kids that you don't want to to flip out, because. That's a real drill. They have no idea what's gonna happen, what they do. So you kind of, you know, I, I don't think there's a a perfect, uh, reason fits.
Yeah, but, but I guess in the end, we have to balance out keeping the kids safe and keeping their mental health intact. Alright.
And I think it's always our priority, but we're trying to do it.
No, I know. And I think this is a good plan.
But then if you have consent, I mean, again, the 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 thing is, you don't want to traumatize, but then. If you have a big proportion of of students that aren't there and then something really happens. That kind of defeats the whole purpose of running drills.
Or natural consent.
Right.
Yeah, so that.
I don't know, and I know that, but.
Reenactment kind of thing, which we don't do, but I mean, we, I, so even though.
That would be set up way in advance and really publicized, okay, I.
And we, I mean, the, I mean, you, the staff, I mean, obviously, this is in this world, they take it very seriously and they're, and the kids, there's not messing around. I mean, the kids take, they're not scared to death, certainly, but.
But they follow the protocols.
Because they know if stuff happens.
Yeah, they see on TV.
And, you know, I mean, we've had training and presentations for them too, and they have really good questions. A lot of what, you know, what if, what if, and so a lot of times it's not an answer, because the answer is do whatever it takes, like, you know, run, throw, you know, lock in, whatever it is.
Yeah.
It's, um, but they have to have those ideas and options in their, in their heads, so that they can. Don't freeze, they don't just can't.
Yeah, I think I was in the elementary building when they practiced one of the quiet exits. Where they put, they threw all the lights out and they let the students know that they can't make any noise. Where they put, they threw all the lights out and they let the students know that they can't make any noise while they're going to the bus.
You should have that every.
Yeah. It was good luck. I wasn't realizing what was going on, I'm like.
Um, so I think we, we got that one pretty well covered.
Yeah, I think so.
Good job, Saak. Can I ask you a question that is not about the drill itself? Because you have to refresh my memory. Are the doors locking in each classroom or is this, are these buildings where there are no locks? I know schools are all different. Inside, can you lock it from inside?
Yeah, and that will explain to you that they're different, we're transitioning.
Yeah, uh, and every building is kind of in a different place and honestly, it's another one of those things where. The mentality of how, what is the best case scenario changes every few years? Um, the TRA now is uh, completely uh, wireless card reger access, which is nice, um, because the problem is if you. Again, depending who you ask, right? You want the door locked at all times, um, that way, again, no issues. But in reality, you're gonna have kids coming, going to the bathroom continuously, people have to get up, it's a really. Rather large disruption. So teachers wanna get up or have someone open the door two, three times a class, right? So the teachers count the doors unlocked. Uh, but the good thing about the TRA now is wireless access, um, there's a feature where uh, it's programmed. So the doors can be unlocked, but in the event a lockdown is called, it automatically locks every door. And it will even tell us if there's any doors not locked. Yeah, it's a really good feature, which is what we're trying to transition to. Um, it's, again, all this stuff costs a lot of money, uh, but we, we just started putting these in at the CEA and this year is the Cat Rattley product where we're gonna add. Uh, twenty uh, classroom uh, accesses. So again, the goal is go district wide with it, but it's gonna be over a few years.
I, I think that's a good trade off too, because I've been in districts where even the closets are locked, I mean, every single door. And you have to have somebody with a, a badge to open it and. It's kind of ridiculous, I mean, I understand the safety, but holy cow.
Yeah, and then you have people with like fifty different keys and don't know what key it is and it's even more problematic, so.
Yeah, and then, because you.
Mister Man one with his fifty eight keys.
I think we have a good procedure again. Uh, alright, moving along here. Now page thirty four, uh, again, this is something that gets updated annually, but. The irony that uh, the state tells us our timeline to have to update its annual plan, but the state, uh, their version. That goes in our plan is not updated yet, it'll be updated August first. Uh, again, we didn't want to delay our whole process because of that, so just know that when that new state um, preparedness plan comes out in CTC. We will update that in our plan accordingly, it's just a link for the CTC document.
I see it. Got that.
Yeah, yeah, alright, moving on.
Um, page thirty seven.
Sure.
Could I ask that we add, um, even though we know what they are, we add the area code to all these phone numbers, please?
Good thought.
And I think that that's a real good thing because a lot of people don't, they don't use them and.
Yeah.
I think this. We used to have a phone that was a, a, a regular phone. They go, oh my gosh, it cost us so much, all this person that was living in Hawaii, they never changed it and, oh my goodness, that. Just people don't change their, their, so.
Well, not a lot of the phones you needed to have there.
Yeah, and then it started with the um, nationwide suicide prevention hotline in order to have it go nationwide. You now have to dial the area code even if you're within that area code.
Yeah, yeah.
So if I have to call this district back up to down six or seven.
Uh, alright, and I guess I misspoke, I apologize, the CDC document was up to date, it's the SED diagram orders on their end. Uh, it's not up to date, but we will, again, once ever it becomes available, we will put that in as appendix D. And the last one here. We, with our brand new work for violence prevention policy that is not intended to. And that then forced a.
I do like the way that. All of the historical changes are kept there except for one point seven.
Yeah, on page forty, can you add the six oh seven too?
Yeah, we'll make sure all the numbers.
Yeah, alright.
Yep.
I just wanted to know, because Chris did a great job doing that.
Thank you. Um, again, so that kind of definitely what we did approve this year at the board, you can see it was twenty twenty four, uh, you probably. So that is not in the plan. Yep, uh, so I guess that is, uh, again, the future revisions, we will. Figure out what happened to revision one through six, uh, affect some page numbers, and then we will make sure all the phones. Have area codes and if for some reason you guys have something at this meeting that you think of, let us know and we'll bring that up at the next meeting. Um, and that's kind of what we'll do, uh, summary of the changes, um, adding the new, so you guys are aware and we'll have a good call.
I do think that, um, I know that there are phone lists. Throughout the building, it would probably be good to make sure that the area code is on all of those as well because. If you're in a situation of any type, whether it's a student is hurt or whatever. It's difficult to remember. The full, even if you're looking at part of the phone number to, you know, to add the area code in, in your mind and just having it there so you look at it and do it. Would be a good idea.
If I think state actually works on these district wide lists and.
And I don't wanna add more work either, but I know that made some changes throughout the document, but anything that we can take and underline off of. And just make it a black bold. Just because it is an online document and underlines tend to make people think something else shouldn't be happening, even though we have a lot, so anything we can do to help. Make that better than.
Oh, so because people don't think it's.
So there are some. But try to, just be cautious to them.
So if it's underlined, it is a hyperlink and if it's.
I see that a lot of.
But anyhow, just enough.
Thank you.
Okay, um, as there are. There's no public here, there is no public comment on the safety hearing. Um, so we will adjourn the safety hearing at seven twenty. They have a motion. Thank you, Chris.
Back in.
Yeah. All those in favor? Any opposed?
Good job, Saak.
Is there a need for an executive session at this time? It's not. Correspondence, um. There is a letter from Incero and companies with his L O P. That brings us to policy discussion.
Captain, briefly talk about the, the letter again, um, so I tell them that you guys got that letter and basically as a part of the audit process, they may reach out to two or three board members. Um, just asking if you're aware of any fraud and feel free to tell them where you feel necessary.
And I think they always reach out to all of us and hopefully.
They send it to all of us, yeah.
Time has changed, I used to only do two or threes.
I think what they're, what they're doing, like Chris said, they sent it out to all of us in hopes that.
Yeah, alright, but just so you guys know that.
That brings us to discussion on, um, policy number seven, one, three, one, admission of non-resident students. And so, um, we've had some discussion later in the meeting, um, this is our. This is our policy and on the top is a um, cover sheet that tells you what the policies are for area of school districts.
Gotcha.
And, um. We talked about a number of things at the last meeting, um. But as I mentioned, um, you. You can set your, if you, if you're gonna accept non-resident students, um, you can. Have language in there that does say things like. If, if there's space and it doesn't require any additional um, hiring. That you'll accept and if the student is in good standing, um, and it has to be renewed each year and the. Family has to do an application process, you can also say that we can't guarantee you. Um, transportation, I, I saw one district, we go act the lake and has we, we, um, if there's a need for home tutoring, we're not gonna uh. Provide that, so it's a very limited acceptance. But the one thing that you can do is you can't really, like I said, do anything that would be seemingly discriminatory. So, um. What I, some districts have, have done has they have moved to. Know non-resident students.
Yes.
And, um. The only exception in each of those districts in our area is for uh. Employees. Some of them charge their employees tuition.
I see that.
They're the ones that basically are the no's.
Yeah. Some of them, so with tuition and then they have also, you know, language in there about, well, you know, there's extenuating circumstances. Or it depends on their contract, some contracts. Personally, I would not be in favor of having, if it's gonna be an employee. But, uh, agreed on that. Talk to us about the, the stipulations, yes, if Roman, no additional staff required. I mean, um, in talking with council about that, it's a tricky thing, because. You could have. For, you know, what happens to be the case is like, we have certain areas where we specialized areas where we don't have. Even certified teachers, certainly not certified enough certified teachers, um, certified support services, things like that. And that could be seeming to be discriminatory. And that that means in those areas, it just happens to be in the areas that we also have a dire shortage.
Right.
And our own, you know, like our district residents. You struggle to give them what they need. And, um.
Isn't that part of our wording though, that we can, if we have a bill of that service.
And what is it based on? Like, is it based before the school year? I mean, this is. If you're let in for the whole year, if you lose a teacher, then that, you can't go back and then tell them you're out, but I mean, just saying though that. And then, so if they're in one year, that does not guarantee the next year that. So many things that are done, if you say yes once.
Yeah.
And it's not our fault, it's not anybody's fault, but it's taken by the person to be. This is in perpetuity, is forever that they said yes once, why would they ever stop it? So I mean, that's just. Anything that we're doing is, is. People just figure it's for good.
I'm a proponent of no to, uh, does district accept non-resident students? No. And there's no stipulation and do employees pay tuition? I'm, I'm kind of in favor, yes. I mean, do we want, do we want that to be a benefit? Here's the problem. If they're, okay, so let's use the example we had, a teacher. Uh, is currently working here, he or she is retiring this year. And they have a child currently going and let's say their child is only in the eighth grade. Um, are we going to continue to allow?
So those two different questions.
Right, so we, we have two things, we have two things going on, right, and, and I know we brought that up, so, you know, again, this is where. I would, you know, I wanna say yes to everything, but there's so many factors that we have to look at. That we're already in a position where we're over capacity. We currently don't have enough staff to support the needs on a day-to-day basis. And by making these decisions, it really doesn't position us well for, you know. Given the circumstances, anything that can happen over the course of a year, so.
While I agree with most of what you're saying, my concern is with the staff. Because what it comes down to is in, in this environment right now. Finding staff is difficult at all levels, and if we suddenly tell staff. That no, you can't bring your child here.
It's a perk.
Or you have to pay to bring.
I'm afraid that there are some staff members that we're going to lose.
Right.
And then we're not going to be able to replace them, so if we could find a happy medium so that.
Right. So it's definitely a perk, so if we say, yeah, do you look at it though, so the second scenario I gave. So let's say we do say, okay, if you're not a resident here, it's no across the board, however. If you are a teacher here or a faculty, we, we, actually, we can't say teacher, anyone, anyone in, any employee at the school. And then you use the up, the circumstance that I gave, so the teacher retires. But then their child has four or five more years left, what's that look like?
So we currently do not have a policy that for retirees, yeah, for retirees, and that was the ask at the last meeting, is that we extend that to retirees.
So we don't. I'd say we don't, I say, so I'll, I'll, I'll go back to what my statement was, because I like, this is why I love talking out loud, because you kind of change your mind a little bit. So I'm a proponent of not letting residents, no, no students, if they're not a resident, no. No, regardless of the stipulation, yes to the, um, any staff member, but have a discussion about if. If the person retires and maybe they're.
And they're a non-resident.
And they're a non-resident, and maybe if it's like their last year or something, it has to.
That, that is already covered in our current policy, if they.
Thank you.
If they move out of the district, and I would assume that we could then bridge that to. Parent retire.
Right.
And they're non-residents, that we allow them to complete, is it the last year? So, so they, if the parent retires at the end of the junior year. The student. All of this is.
So that would be regardless of grade because like.
At the end of their junior year.
Junior year, yeah.
So that they could complete their high school career.
Okay.
Here, because as somebody who moved around a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can tell you that if I had had to move my, at the end of my junior year and do my senior year at a totally new school, that would have been. Really rough.
So I'm looking at this chart, I probably discussed it when I was. Are we the only school then in this area that doesn't charge for tuition?
That's what I'm looking at.
No, we do charge for tuition. No, the Ys are. Yeah, no, so the, so eh, the only ones that say with tuition are the ones right here, it says with tuition. So in the last, do employees pay tuition? Their policies, it says yes, but then where it says with tuition, that means they actually do actually pay them. So what, what, those, that's how I was saying before, so you can set tuition and then waive it for employees. So there is a tuition set and then they just have in their, in their agreements that they waive it for employees.
So all the ones that have a what, just a Y. Means that the employees, they.
So with wage, there's a lot of them, some of them are teacher. Not all of these are employees, a lot of districts are all employees, but some of them are teachers specifically.
Yes, they are, and yeah, and it's like, and it's different, and even beyond that, it can be different. Some, some pay tuition, some pay partial tuition, there's all kinds of complications with that, but in all districts in our region. Employees are allowed one way or another to have their children, so if we change that policy, that would disadvantage us in hiring. Yeah, because if you have young children to be able to go to work someplace.
No, I, I'm for that, but you're not talking about retired.
We're talking about. Currently employed, so I would be a proponent if they retire. And then they, the ki-, you know, if the kid's finishing out, the student's finishing out the school year. But if they wanna continue the next four years, they pay tuition. Because at the end of the day, nothing's free. I mean, you, you received your benefit while you were here, you're getting state benefits and all that great stuff, but we still have to.
It would just allow retirees' children to be here, but then we wouldn't accept anyone else. Because if we say no.
Say that some districts have these grandfather clauses.
That's where I'm going with this, is the grandfather clause.
Are you bet a student?
Right. Thank you for clarifying that, yeah. I mean, again, this is just my opinion, so jump in, because I've been thinking about it since our last conversation. Um, I just look at, I'm looking at this as. This is a business, we're running a business here, we are. Everything costs money, we still want everybody to have the advantages, we still wanna offer, we wanna make. We wanna make it desirable to work here, we wanna offer all those things, but we're still running a business at the end of the day.
And our business is to provide an education to our district residents.
That's right, our district residents, not non-residents. That is absolutely correct, Joanne, so thank you for bringing that up one more time.
I guess, I get the way I'm feeling about it is that. I feel we should move to. Not accepting non-resident students with the exception of staff.
Yes.
Staff students, or you know, staff children, however you wanna put it.
Employees of the school district.
Yes.
Yeah, I I.
And and I would, and I would be a proponent of continuing to waive. Tuition for employees' children, because like you said, it is a benefit we can offer.
Yep.
And. We can't always compete salary-wise.
That's right.
But with offering that, because it is so much easier, your kid is here, you don't have to try to find childcare for your kid. Thirty miles away, because your school days are ending at the same time. Um, so it is a big deal.
So we have two scenarios. So I mean, so we can, and we discussed discussing a little bit in the last meeting, I mean, you could. Do this, you could have a phase in period for this year, right, and say. To the people who are, like, somebody's applying right now, say. You can make a decision now, or you need to know that we're changing this policy, and in the next year, you're gonna have to make a different plan. Or we just say, try to change this policy like this summer.
I wanna do it effective immediately when we change it, because I just.
I don't know that we have the time though to.
If we, right, I know we have the 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 first and second reading, I'm just gonna say out loud. It's always best practice to do sooner than later, because you're getting people's hopes up that. Oh, my kid gets to go there, they love it, and now.
I I think though that that. You're both kind of saying the same thing.
Yeah.
In terms of that, yes, we're, yes, we could try to get it done this summer, however, it may not be done. Before the start of the school year. So parents who are newly applying.
Prepare them.
Would would have to know that.
We can, we can say we're not taking any resident, non-residents.
Can we say that without having our policy updated for first and second reading and finalized? Are we authorized to do that, Joanne? I don't know the answer to that, cuz again, that would be, oh.
Um, I Stacy.
I have not related, but I just wanted to let you all know that I do have two applications out. That haven't been yet to for non-resident, non-students of staff.
Thank you. And see, I would wanna communicate to them.
So we have, so we have to look at two different things.
Okay.
Allowing some employee students to attend. While they're employed here.
Yep.
And we have to look at allowing non-resident students. Who are not children of school employees, whether we're going to allow them to attend.
So let's do this, and so in our policy, number seven says the board education reserves the rights to them or deny individual non-resident student.
But we have to be a hundred percent across the. Right, it it can't pick and choose, so that's why we don't want that in there, because it's gonna be. Uh we want, we want it to be very clear that it doesn't matter what your child's needs are. This is the decision that. We've made. As a policy.
You said it's cloudy legally, so it'd be easier to say no.
If you pick and choose.
No non-residents.
If space and no additional additional staff. My my concern is that that is going to affect. Let's see, that would affect more high-needs students. Then.
Absolutely.
Students who are not high-needs, and so that is in itself is going to become discriminatory.
Right.
Whether whether or not we intend it to be. That's gonna be a reality. So Joanne, what you're saying though is because. Our policy says non-resident student, right, no. If we say we're not taking resident students without changing our policy. Legally, non-resident students legally, we are not even being able to take our staff. Students, because they are non-resident students. If we say we are not taking non-resident students, we need to change the policy so it says. The except, the staff will be allowed.
Right, yeah.
We have to do that so that it can be taken here.
I think the policy, as written with the the number seven clause.
Still covers though.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if we wanted to. Use that, if use to change it to no non-resident students or non-students of staff, you could use that clause right now.
Say, that's already in there, and it couldn't be done that way.
Well, yes, for to allow the the staff. Employees, the employees to children. But what I'm, what I'm saying is that.
I know what you're saying.
Exactly, if we. If we don't have a new policy in place before the beginning of the school year. And then suddenly, it's enacted and it says. If Roman, no additional staff. That's that's where, that's why I'm saying we need to inform people. That.
The policy's changing.
This may be changing and. If you're approved for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Is if it's changing, then you may not be approved for. The um twenty-five, twenty-six.
But we didn't approve it for twenty-four, twenty-five, you have.
So we need to decide how we wanna change it. So then put it up for first reading in July.
Yeah.
And then have it for.
Next year, not this year.
Can we do a pulse check? Uh, can we go around, Benny? What are your thoughts? Uh, it's Benny, right?
Yes.
All right, Benny, what are your thoughts on um? The tuition for non-residential students? Are you for or against that?
I s- say, no non-resident students unless you are an employee within point school district.
Okay, and and what are your thoughts? Um, I'm okay with no non-resident. Yes, employee, and then grandfather after retirement. Oh, grandfather, okay, I'm agreed. Uh, what are your thoughts? So I would be willing to do the grandfather, but then going forward, no grandfather, right? So you got the whoever's.
The grandfather would become the policy. The grandfather would say something like, and we can write it up. That um if a faculty member had their students in the district for till tenth grades. And previous, and if they're in good standing, then we as a board can approve them. As a non-resident, I'd be with tuition. That's my cabot on the grandfather. Is that they would have with tuition if they have retired.
I'm gonna go with Chris on that.
That makes total sense, because normally it's gonna be one or two years, it's like it's gonna be.
But I'm curious what your thoughts are.
Sorry, and I fringed at tuition just because now this um ex-employee or previous retired employee is on a fixed, and we don't know what that tuition rate's gonna be. It could be two thousand, it could be twenty thousand.
No, no, it'll never.
No, and for se- for secondary students, it can be thousands of dollars.
Right, thousands, but real quick, Zach, the highest we've ever seen is forty-five hundred.
Around there.
A year, so I'm with you, I understand where you're going with that, but.
So I'm, we're talking about all employees, and some employees. Salaries are less.
Oh, no, I completely under, I I I know, I'm not, I'm not dismissing forty-five hundred. Right, forty-five hundred dollars is still a lot a year, but I'm just trying to, yes, we understand there's different income levels there.
They may have to choose. It's a hard choice. But we always as a board have the right to waive a tuition.
Always, yeah, but you're setting a precedent there. I think we should be, do we, if we grandfathered in, if the teacher retires. Uh, we go with either they pay tuition, or you're willing to waive it. And grandfathered in and waive the tuition until their child graduates from here.
What if you put in a some uh a maximum amount of years, that could, they could go, because what if someone retires and they have someone in second grade?
Right.
But and and conversely, what if you have somebody who retires and. There, now they're gonna be a sophomore.
Right.
Right, well, that that's.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Grandfather grades start.
The year after the te- the faculty person retires, that would be.
Whenever the new school year is.
Right. So Tom, what are your thoughts on that? We've got a couple, what was your thoughts on it?
Going some direction.
No, what do you think about non-residents?
I I know, I I have a whole.
No, but are you, are you for it or not? And tell us your opinion.
Well, one of the things to to consider as well, right now, we're set. Our our enrollment is steady and uh even growing. But a lot of districts are losing, and at some point, if we're losing, and we can always revisit this, but I just wanted to bring that up. It could be revisited that we would allow, because if you don't have enough students, that's not.
So there is a district, you know, in our region, who I know that I've spoken to about this, that their enrollment has dropped. And they, so they are, there's no tuition for anybody.
Yeah.
And pretty much, as long as you're in good standing, you are welcome to come for that reason.
Because that's the total opposite problem that now we might have staff, but we don't have students, and you can get.
If we get to that point, that's when you make that, that that's another business decision.
I know, but I wanted to mention that while we were having.
And it's gonna change, because the state's gonna change the law, they're gonna have it so that you can. Pick any school district you want with a certificate thing, so it's gonna happen.
You know, you don't know when, okay, I heard about it, but so Tom.
Which that that's just.
What's your, what's your opinion? What's your opinion about faculty and their kids coming here?
I think the faculty should have uh the right to bring the students, um looking at it. Again, I look at it more long-term.
Yeah.
That if you come in and you have a three-year-old. And you're there, and things are, it's assumed. That's that's my concern, because now, um starting as three, that's fifteen years in the district.
Well, what's your concern? Are, is your concern that they retire? And they don't, I'm just.
I'm looking at that as well, but I'm just saying that unfortunately, a lot of these things, that if they start out. And they, it's three through sixth grade, and then they move. It just. I don't know, I I, my concern is trying to save people from themselves, that they can't assume that there's a lot more that's gonna happen. So I think that. Um, I think that staff should be able to do it. Um.
With. With no fee, and even after they retire, should there be?
Well.
That's a separate discussion. Let's get this down first.
Okay, I wasn't. Okay.
So I think that we should do, I like the idea that. Uh, no outside tuition.
No.
Not accepting outside students.
With the exception of.
Of faculty.
And should tuition, or should enrollment drop? It takes what, two months to be able to change that policy and reopen it?
Yeah.
Right, but I'm just saying that I don't think we, but I mean, that's another option that.
We had.
It's not a, it's not a done deal forever.
No.
It's something that in the future, but just to mention it now, what we're discussing.
One of the other things that we could do, which I don't think, I don't know that you want, but it is an option, is that we can have a special meeting. Get the timetable. This summer.
I'd be okay with that, literally, just.
Because you would just have that.
It's just this.
I mean, but we would, but we would have to make sure that we have enough. Board members who can attend said meeting.
Right, yeah.
The time scheduled for.
It's usually thirty days between.
We've done special readings, just to get something buttoned up, because I think this is important, and it costs us money.
And and it's not great, but it, and other, the other wise is to just. This year is we're working to make sure that next year.
And the and the parents. You're not even.
We're working on it.
So what what we have to make sure is anybody who is newly applying.
Yep.
That they're told, yes, that they know that our policy is changing, and they may not be approved for a further year. Now, here's another question.
Well, I don't wanna approve them for this year.
So but unless we get.
I I understand.
I'm just saying, if we cannot get it in place by the start of the school year.
Okay.
That's what we'll have to do, but here's another.
Right, cuz we seem to still be covered on what we have now, so.
That again, like we've not ever done that, so you know, to do it suddenly, you mean, we say a safer place if you had just changed your policy.
I just wanna change. Let's have a special.
Okay, but wait a second, here is another question. That's another permutation of this. We have students who we have been approving for non-resident students, and they have been attending the school. What happens to them if we change our policy?
Well, we talked about this whole, well, uh in addition, we talked about that, that being part of a grandfather clause as well. So do we look at that entire list?
These are staff students, these are all staff students.
Yes, wait.
But we have, and that, we have one other application.
And we get to vote on them several, potentially.
We get to vote on them separately, right?
Yes.
Stephanie, are you saying there's a separate list of non uh employed children that we haven't looked at yet?
No, no, that we, that we. We've already proved them in the past, so right now we have.
How many are there?
Yeah, we have a bunch of students that are non-residents.
Yeah, how much is a bunch?
So we have um. We have the non-resident students of staff members.
Yeah.
And we have one student um who has applied that is a. A student of a retired teacher.
Yeah.
But let's just call her a non-resident student, because that's what she truly is.
Right.
One student who has just left the district, who is hoping to stay in the district.
But they're not their senior, they're not juniors, assuming, it doesn't meet.
And then we have another um student who was here. For a few years, um elementary student, who was approved last year for as a non-resident student with tuition paid. Um, who, the application is out there, and then we have another family that has not ever attended. But the application is out there.
Only one.
So it's like four.
You've got four.
No, no, I just added four, you got four, just did four.
So so wait, so wait, wait, so so three have never been here before and they're applying, is what you're saying. I think so there's a family of three.
One have not.
I I.
There's, there's a family who are applying who have not attended, and then there are two students who have attended previously.
And actually, it's three, cuz Lori Ward's daughter has been here. All three of the four, three have been here already, but they're all non-residents, and one has never come.
Zoom booth has sent in a chat comment.
Yeah, and and we're not really supposed to the.
Yeah, we take it, we're not taking comments, right? Um, or can we hear?
However, we can. We do have comments from the public section coming up. We're not making any hard and fast decisions. Tonight, because we have to reformat everything, and we can have you. Read the comment online during comments from the public. Would that satisfy everybody?
Yes.
Cuz that's what it would be appropriate, we wouldn't, if if somebody was sitting in the audience right now. We would not allow them to comment on our discussion at this point.
They would have had a opportunity.
But no, but we still, we haven't had our first one.
So I would wanna, I would wanna see the list of the. Active. Faculty, I'm just curious what grades those folks are.
Uh, but you know, we, it doesn't matter what grade or anything.
It doesn't, okay. All right. So, all right, so right now, we only have three that have been here, one that hasn't, that's all that we have right now.
That are not.
Non-resident.
Non-resident, not, not, and and not children of employees.
Perfect.
So would we consider grandfather and then those children?
None, okay. Well, I mean, I'm saying no, right.
I'm saying no.
I'm saying no, I'm gonna voice my opinion loud and clear, so it's.
It's it's loud and clear.
Hold on, we've got too many conversations going on to non-residents who are not.
So, let's talk about the fact that it would be a smarter move. To change the policy. Yeah, if we, if something that you wanna ask on now.
I would like to ask.
Then, then we can say that we can gather all the data, get some examples in language, get something knocked up. And then have a, a meeting just for that purpose that we need the timetable.
But we would have to meet next Tuesday in order to make that.
So there would be thirty days before our August meeting.
And it'd be, it'd be a short meeting.
Can I do a call-in? Cause I'm on vacation, but I'll call in for it.
I'm on vacation as well, so.
But you don't have to necessarily call in. As long as we have enough people.
You need four, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, if you are visible, if you zoom in and you are visible, you can vote.
Yes.
If, if it's just on the phone, if we can't.
We can have a special meeting just for that.
Okay, yes.
Perfect.
But.
What was the but?
Who said it or before? Just throwing this out here. Do we want to make that option open for retirees? If their students pay tuition.
I don't want them to be free.
That's why we vote.
So should we?
Just, I mean, if we're going with that, I would, I would even look at just whoever is currently working. They would be covered for the future for possibly free and it would sunset or grandfather in and then sunset for that group. Um, and then they can change after that, but these are current employees that it is an option.
I don't know what you mean, so if.
So if there are people working right now, but they may never retire and have the situation where they need to have their children here. They wouldn't even count, but the ones that are here, that want to. They would be available, but anyone that's after this year or after right now that on this list. They, they would not be considered.
I see.
Every time leaves and then we would, uh, or, or charging after that or whatever, but at least, so that would cover. Either paid for these people or free for these people, it would just give them a look. And then anybody after that, it would be come in knowing this is not being done or it will be done for free or it's gonna be charged for, uh, retirees.
Gotcha.
So.
I would have to see it written out in order to decide if I'm being fair or not because. Yes. But I would just, I would have to see it written out.
But yeah, I'm looking at some.
And I just go back to the same concern I've had before that a three-year-old gets somebody somehow.
Three, two.
You don't need two or three on there then.
No, it just.
Just because I know who they are.
And I don't think it would be a big.
It shouldn't matter who they are.
No.
No, no, I wasn't referring to that. I was just looking at the current grades and I'm, I'm looking at. Um, you know, inflation and the cost of how much it costs the school district year over year for a student, that's all.
But, but having said it, those options, I would lean towards those people.
So, could I try to summarize this so that? You know, we know. We know, okay, so. The way we wanna move forward is that. Once the policy is changed, there will be. No non-resident students accepted with the exception of. Children of staff members, employees.
Current employees.
Or, or legal, legal, legal.
Guardian employees because if there, somebody has a guardianship, it doesn't matter.
Parents that.
Okay, so current employees, that's, that's right.
So we will have, with the exception of. Current employees, stu-, if children or dependents or. That their legal guardians over, okay, because basically if you're a legal guardian of somebody, they are your child. In, in the eyes of the law, okay? And that. So what was the grandfather part of that?
Grandfather, I think what Tom was saying was that any students that are. Non-resident employees, students that are given. Um, the permission to go to school here, this group will be in a grandfather clause that. They won't, they can stay here without being charged tuition. Even if the faculty member retires.
That is exactly.
Ones that are here now.
Right.
Right now.
But then going forward.
Right.
Any faculty member whose children come here as non-residents and they retire and then they would be susceptible to tuition.
Yes, excellent summary.
Yep.
Phenomenal, I love it. That's what I call working together.
Which is why I wanted to summarize.
Tom, that, that summarized it correctly, right, for you?
Yeah.
Okay.
It was kinda some discussion that that's what was mentioned.
I, I, I think.
Right, because it really wouldn't be fair if you had your kid here five years, if you're gonna retire and they only have a few years left.
Because, because we do have some staff members who that is the case.
Yeah.
That they will be eligible to retire prior to their children.
This also realistically brings up another concern, which shouldn't have to worry about, but. And it's always been, they'd have to get them here, but if they were bringing them here working. And it, it's just, I mean, realistically, I, I know, I know it's not something, but realistically.
They may change their minds.
Depending on the ages and whatever, it's just something, it can really affect this, it's just.
Yeah, it could say in any, many, almost all policies say that, that transportation is not.
Right, and, and our, and our current policy says.
I'm just saying that I know that in the way in the past, there was actually some, they would, they would transport.
But it's fair.
Their, their. That was a lot of transport, that was for one year and some of these might be longer, so I'm just trying to say to the board.
Yep.
In reality, some of this might not protract, especially the ones that are how far, so it might not be a moot point anyway, but.
Right.
I think it is a very good, um, like Kirk, who's still saying, and I mean, which all.
No, it's good, good feedback to me.
Okay, so you get all that? Here, here's the next question then.
Yep.
In order to get this, have first and second reading and have it accepted, we would have to meet. Before or on next Tuesday in order to have the first reading. And to then be able to have the second reading at our August, our already scheduled August.
Our retreat. Oh wait, no, not our retreats.
The meeting's the thirteenth, am I correct?
Yeah, the other meetings, the thirteenth, the thirtieth.
Is our next meeting.
Oh, right.
So again, we would have to have a meeting, at this point it would be Monday or no, it would have to be before.
I'll do it on Thursday.
The next meeting is the thirteenth.
How about Sunday, Melanie?
Tom's getting salty.
Is she correct that since it's, our meeting is on the thirteenth in August, but then.
Yeah, thirty days.
So we can meet anytime next week, basically, yeah.
Or, and you could have two special. Wait, a week or two.
Yeah, get her done. Oh wait, no, we can't, we have to thirty days.
But you could also have a special meeting at the end of August.
Yeah.
But people need to make a decision on whether they're going to move forward with their application as a non-resident.
But if this is our, if we have this on the calendar, then they can be told if that's what's being looked at. And this is what's being proposed, which basically means this is what's probably gonna happen and they can be told now. And even to me, I mean, July for September, that's kinda late.
We gotta, we gotta solidify this first, then we'll take.
When we get to public comment section.
No, 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 I mean, not that.
Okay, I can do Monday, Tuesday or Wednesday, awesome. Do I have to say Monday, Tuesday or Wednesday? Anybody else?
I could do Monday, Tuesday.
I need to look.
I can do Monday or Tuesday.
I can do Tuesday.
Can't do any day, but I can call in.
Well, I'm calling in too, I'm on vacation.
Okay, I'm on vacation all week as well.
This is just.
I'm trying to like next Tuesday.
Yes.
I would have to find coverage. So for me on Tuesday, it would be dependent upon.
Coverage.
At work because I work until eight o'clock regularly.
Only on Tuesdays.
Tuesdays, okay, Tuesday. I can't say right this second that I can have somebody covered for me.
Okay.
But I can certainly attempt to do that.
I can do eight thirty Tuesday.
Eight thirty in the morning?
I could do it on evening too, because I'm on vacation. I don't care what time I call in. On vacation. I mean, I could do mornings, I can do anytime during the. I could do morning too. Oh, I could, I prefer morning. I'm on vacation. Tom, I'm on vacation. Good morning, noon and night.
Okay. Can we table for a moment what date we took, I'm looking over coverage right now.
Okay.
And if I can get coverage on Tuesday.
Again, it could, could and should be read.
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, thank you Stephanie for checking.
Not one of the work. This is good stuff. I love it.
Do you have to read out there? Let's go, move it. I heard I got voted in for president, Steph. You want it?
Let her read.
No, I don't, Stephanie, I know.
Policies for first reading, there is none. Policies for second reading.
He's getting a sheet together. Each fourteen, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, policies for second reading, there are none. That brings us to our first opportunity for comments from the public. There is a second opportunity at the end of the meeting. Each speaker will be limited to a maximum of three minutes. And the entire public comment period to a maximum of thirty minutes. This may be waived by a majority vote of the board. The board requests that each speaker stand, state their name, residency and topic of discussion. By law, the board will not commit any public statements regarding individual students or employees. Please be advised that while the board takes public comment very seriously, we are not allowed to comment or respond during the meeting. As this is our opportunity to hear from our stakeholders. Items brought to the attention of the board will be taken under consideration for future responses or actions. Or the proper staff member will get back to you with the, at the appropriate time. All of that being said, we are in an unusual situation. Normally you have to make a request. To have, to participate in comments from the public when you are attending virtually. My understanding is that we have had somebody that has, one person. One person who has made, who would like to comment during this time period, who is attending virtually and. I will read it. And Shannon will read the comment out loud. I'm assuming that since there is nobody currently in our audience here. There is nobody here who would like to speak up on this, since we all had our opportunity during our discussion for that. So Shannon, please go ahead and read the comment from.
Okay, so, um, online they're able to put it in the chat, um, but we do ask that they give their names. So this is from Richard Vasant.
Scroll touchscreen, uh, his comment.
I have sent, I have a letter sent to this board. I'm totally against not letting outside children go to school there. My son is special needs and my window is now small for him to go back there. On this, he made such progress in that school and mentally it would be a big drain on him mentally. He is enrolled in summer school and I'm waiting on this to get him the help he needs. Thank you, Mr. Vasant.
Thank you. Um, we will have an opportunity for the board to have further brief discussions. During, um, Board of Education comments later in the meeting. Is that acceptable to everybody?
Yes.
Okay. And yes, thank you, Mr. Vasant for your comment. We appreciate it. Commendations, are there any? So, um. Commendations to, um, thanking to everybody on the board, you've just made an graduation. Um, it was lovely and thank you for doing your good share. That little scramble, I still don't really know what happened to the chair.
Actually, I've had several people tell me who were in the stands.
Yeah.
There were enough chairs, there were students who left chairs between themselves. So that was. Right, no, but I, I've heard from several people who were in the stands and could see that there were a couple of students. Who decided to not sit next to the person.
Oh, jeez.
That left, well, I shouldn't say decided not to, but there was a chair left empty between several people. Which created the situation of not enough chairs when they got to the end.
Well, and then, then when everybody sat, all the chairs that were there all got accounted for too, so.
Yep, yep, but I like your flexibility and your spot, your ability to get up and just problem solve, so.
Students stand, it was better if we had to stand up and direct to the other chairs.
And thank you to Scott McIntyre and the whole, uh, grounds, uh, building and grounds. The footballs who worked really hard to make everything really beautiful and thank you to Teresa Monaco for, uh, kicking that off. Everybody into gear and making sure everybody did what they were supposed to do and, um, it was fine and you guys were flexible and got up and got the. The jackets down on the ground, I mean, it was really.
Yeah.
A little exercise.
It, it's okay, it all worked out, you know, because we saw it like right away and Tom and I are like, okay.
Yes.
Um.
Not right away, somebody in the first, Mr. Tubby went through and we fixed it after the first.
Well, because we, no, but we took it down before he went through.
But it was the wrong side, then we fixed it.
Right, yeah, but here's my question, how upset were they about the confetti?
It was poof. Yeah, they, because they were gonna, they wanted to use silly string and you went back with.
No, 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 no. Okay, so they, alright, yeah, they got it. I personally thought that that was a really cool thing from the, for them to do. I thought it looked impressive. I thought that they all enjoyed it. And as long as.
In front of them, got it in their ear. I liked it.
But I, I do feel better knowing that maintenance knew about it beforehand and.
No, I didn't say that, but either, but it's like, I'm glad they knew about it.
Consult and to make sure that they didn't, it's gonna cause significant damage and, and really that silly string really would, it would get.
Silly string is horrible.
Oh, yeah, um, so, yeah. Um, so thank you, everybody, and, and also to Diane Richards for a lovely speech.
That was so great singing.
Yeah.
And. Yeah, no, I was munching there. And I, I loved it, all I needed to know, I.
Yeah.
Kindergarten.
That's very cool, yeah. And then also, um, thank you to everybody who took part in all of the, the, um, learning that happened in the last week for the adults in the district. Um, after the kids were gone, we had people working hard all over the place, thank you. Uh, Shannon for organizing everything, um, but, um, there are lots of changes, lots of curricular changes. So people were learning and working together, so you'd get all set from the beginning of the school year, um. Uh, you know, it was a very productive, uh, last few days of the year, so.
It's been in the heat. Because the first two days of school are already jam packed when required.
Yes.
Things, so to be able to alleviate a little bit of that was good.
And, and like I said also, that, that heat must release something, not on the day that we ended up having to early release. Ended up having a thunderstorm and it wasn't so bad, but those days afterward were very hot, especially in the.
I ended up having a thunderstorm and it wasn't so bad, but those days afterward were very hot, especially in the second floor of the. D R A.
Well, maybe next year they can move up into the stem one where it's gonna be.
Yeah.
There's gonna be A C.
Yep.
Okay, um. Old business, there is none. Um. New business. Um we come to the consent agenda again. May I have a motion? Thank you, Chris. Second.
Second.
Thank you, Molly. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay. Um. We need to approve the retirement resignation of Teresa Bumpa. Later effective July eighth, twenty twenty four. May I have a motion?
So.
Thank you, Tom. And a second.
Second.
Thank you, Benny. Thanks, Teresa, for all her hard work. How long did she work here? Do you know approximately? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstain?
I, I just wanted to mention that I always appreciate that because especially in those positions, they don't tend to stay that long. So that's, that's a pretty good stint.
Yeah.
Not with Eddie withstanding, but.
Yeah, well, Eddie was a uh.
Yes.
A person. By himself. He was extraordinary.
Set aside. Person, so.
Okay, um approve the appointment of David Wfter. Later effective July first, twenty twenty four. Thank you, Chris. The second.
Second.
Thank you, Tiana. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, um we are going to approve the list of. Um non-resident students. Of staff. In the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Um. And. Tuition will be waived. Um you all have the list in front of you. May I have a motion?
So.
Thank you, Tom. And a second.
Second.
Oh, go ahead, Tiana.
Thank you, Tiana.
So we should vote on this even though we're changing the policy.
But we're not changing the policy for staff.
Right, I know, but I was. And the question, we don't have a policy for staff, I remember. It's just, we have no policy. There's just practice for staff.
Right.
But we're gonna include that.
Where you are going to make it forward.
Yes. Thank you, Chris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay.
That's not in contracts. No, okay.
Approve the following student of retired staff member to attend the Whitney Point Central School District for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year and let tuition be waived. Oh. May I have a motion?
Some.
Thank you, Tom. And a second.
Second.
Okay, so.
Table this.
Can I take this off? Can we take this off and table it?
Um. I don't know that we can, because didn't we make a decision on? What, in our discussion?
He's a non-resident, so we're voting that.
They're not resident student, retired staff, though. But didn't we say?
She, yeah.
Retired staff, this we use. That we were going to still allow students of retired staff members to attend. But not waive tuition.
So we can't table this? Well, that's why I want to say table it.
I think we can still table it.
Yeah, because that's what we said. This is waiving tuition.
Right.
That's the last part. Am I, am I right in how I interpreted this, or am I wrong?
It, it is asking for us to waive tuition, but we can. I, if we don't table it, we can. Choose not to waive tuition.
We agree.
But it might be best if we. No, uh, let's table it. Can we table it?
Go ahead, Zach.
At this point, there's not gonna be any tuition anyway, right? Because it's K through six.
But I think we need to look at the application because if I'm correct. This teacher retired before this child ever started coming to school here.
Oh.
So I think we need to table it and look at our policy and then make a decision. Might have to change. Have a, I have a motion to change what this is. It's my impression.
That's my thoughts, but just.
Yeah, right, but if we table it, we just. Table it, right? If we. Choose to change. The language. We would have to redo the motion.
So now, we have to vote on it, either we can vote. And then change the language and be.
So we have two choices. We can table this. For now. Or. We can. Redo the motion. With. Tuition not being waived. And. Vote on it now. But.
Can I ask if you need more information? Um. Based on like the issue that you're looking to change in the new policy?
I need more information on this situation.
I would like that.
So we should table it and get the new information. That's what I would prefer.
Because it could have been just discussed, discussed and then whatever needed to be done as well, so.
Exactly.
So we need more information than it should be tabled. But this way it could have been discussed and then direction could have been done, so.
Yeah. Okay. Is the board in favor of tabling um this motion?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, we are tabling that motion. Non-resident student with tuition being paid. Um. For the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. The student. Has been. Attending. Um. Yeah, they, they were attending this past school year. As a tuition paying non-resident.
No, no.
No, if you. They were, okay, well, I. It's hard to remember because we have several different permutations.
Siding here and then they move.
Thank you.
Let's table this one off until we. Um change our policy just to be consistent.
Yeah. I'm in favor of that as well. I agree. I would not want to make a decision and then have our policy. End up saying something different. And if we're tabling it, we're not saying no. We're not saying yes. We need. More consideration.
Yeah.
Yes.
What does that mean for the student um? Who has a platform in some.
And in here stays in.
Is planning on attending summer program.
They're not assumed to be. Here.
Okay.
And so, yeah. Till we meet again, which is next week.
Okay.
When is the summer program start?
Next week.
So, yes, so at most they will.
Miss.
Okay.
We did, thank you for asking that, thanks.
Okay. So we are tabling this motion. For the evening, correct?
Yes, please.
Okay. We now have a bond resolution. A bond resolution of the Board of Education of the Whitney Point Central School District from Shenango and Portland and Tioga Counties, New York. The district. Authorizing the issuance of eight hundred eighty-five thousand, four hundred ninety-three dollars in serial bonds. Of the district to finance the purchase of the school transportation. Vehicles. Set forth below is a summary of settled solution adopted by the Board of Education of Whitney Point Central School District, et cetera. Um, the resolution entitled bond resolution of the Board of Education.
Uh, real quick, it should be today's day for the meeting, otherwise I get not the first.
Try a second, okay. Board of Education of the Whitney Point Central Schools District, et cetera. Um. To the amount of, of debt obligations authorized, eight hundred eighty-five thousand, four hundred ninety-three dollars. Objects or purposes for which the obligations could be issued to purchase two new seventy-one passenger diesel buses. Two new thirty-nine passenger diesel wheelchair buses. And one new seven passenger gas Chevrolet Suburban or equivalent. Period of probable usefulness, five years. Five years.
With the attorney reference.
Okay. The resolution summarized herein shall be available for public inspection during normal business hours at the offices of the District Clerk of the Whitney Point Central School District. Ten Kibble Road, Whitney Point, New York, one three eight six two. May I have a motion? Thank you, Chris. And a second.
Second.
Thank you, Tiana.
I'd like to say that I have a seventeen-year-old Chevy Suburban, that they're all. Sorry to the.
There's a lot of money there, but I'm sure.
And the reason why I question is because we've not had. The time limit.
Yeah.
Before.
Yeah, this is new.
This is bond council and how they write it. I think they write it five years because that's how long you borrow the funds for.
Yeah.
Gotcha, okay.
That doesn't mean we can't keep it front of.
No, I'm sorry to make the joke. I'm sorry.
I just, you know, I mean, but we just have to make sure that. We're not, you know.
Yeah.
That we're understanding what we're approving and that we're not just assuming that. The buses and the suburban are going to.
Give out.
Give out at five years.
It's expensive, but you don't, you do your due diligence, I'm sure, Zach. Just, it looks, it's a lot of money for that, but it is what it is, right?
Okay.
So again, this was the voter authorization in May that was already uh approved by the voters.
Yeah.
This is a formality after the fact. Uh the board had to approve this bond resolution and then there's a lot of people involved, bond counsel, fiscal advisor, C B O. Uh stuff, you know, they've seen some paperwork uh first week of August and again, um that basically lets us borrow those funds and. How all these people kind of have our replacement strategy structured, where we're always kind of borrowing as uh that payment's coming off the books, keep it sustainable.
Yeah, I like your process on how you do that.
Yeah.
As buses are removed, you're constantly bringing in the new one, new ones and rotating.
We did in the past in tough financial times. Skip. At least one year, possibly two of bus replacements. And I know that it ended up. Biting us in the back. In the end, because then we had one to two years of buses that. Should already have been replaced, that we were trying to live along with them. And so. Keeping up with the. You know. Budgeted. Sustainable. Scheduled. Replacements is a much better idea. Instead of having to all of a sudden expend. Two to three times that amount in one year.
Yeah.
And I'll tell you, if this was electric buses, that'd be more than helpful.
Oh, yes. We appreciate what you do, Zach. We know, we know you say that word.
And we don't have enough extension cords to power on the road.
We don't have the infrastructure anyway, but.
And to be honest, electric buses do not yet have. The technology. To be usable. For our size district.
Not in the rural area, not in the cold weather that we have. And our bridges can't sustain the weight of some of those buses, so it does not position us well in a rural area.
The electric stations behind Greg. Did you know that?
Uh, I think it's.
Did you know?
I, no, it is not.
Did you know?
No, it is the Baptist Church. It's their property. Um, they have contracted the company, um. The company is going to be. Installing the stations and then. Um, the Baptist Church will get. A very small amount of. The proceeds from.
Mr. Frank Fernand Derry didn't put in some, I'm really shocked.
I was surprised too.
Okay, thank you.
Let's keep on moving. Good stuff. Good job, Zach.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Transportation contract extensions, um. The following transportation contract extensions with cost increase of three point nine percent. Based on the pupil transportation C P I. We have button eight bus. Bus maintenance with New York bus sales. And transportation of students with seraphine transportation. May I have a motion?
So.
Thank you, Tom. The second. Second. Thank you, team.
The question on the attachments, which I don't have my computer here, but it's.
They were the same attachment.
Same.
Yeah, I think. They're supposed to give us a seraphine type of form too for that. Uh we just didn't have it in file, but.
Okay.
Yeah, it was still getting submitted by Stephanie, saying sure. That's on you. Um, so yeah, again, the, the basic transportation contracts, we get ninety percent back on those. Um technically, you have to do a, a bid for the initial service. Then you're allowed to renew if the district and the vendor agree to um. An increase not more than that C P I number. So that C P I number was.
It was the increase on both.
Three point nine percent.
Three point nine was the.
Yeah. I'll tell you, even that, they have to think about it and. They're not sure sometimes about it, but they both agree to. Extend.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Good.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Approve the following bid extensions, garbage and recycling extension number two with tailored garbage surface. Plumbing, time and materials extension number one. Um Luis and Pachano and Sons Incorporated. May I have a motion? Thank you, Chris. And a second.
Second.
Thank you, Molly. Um I do have a question about this one. Is the plumbing time and materials with Pachano, is that related to the project or?
No, um so basically that's uh again, when we have uh plumbing need pop up, we don't have to worry about tanning coats or getting a bid out. You do that for emergency type of work, so. Say a pipe burst in the hallway is beyond our, our crew's capacity, we can just call the local Pachano. They'll come right over and uh it happens frequently in our buildings. Um, so that way, again, you have this setup, so you're still in. Uh purchasing apartments.
Thanks. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? School vehicle purchases. Um, purchase of a new Chevrolet Suburban, it's a rebid and it will be awarded to Jack McNerney Chevrolet in the amount of eighty-two thousand, one hundred thirty dollars for the attached. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Chris. The second.
Second.
Thank you, Tiana.
That vehicle costs more than my first house did.
Too, um and actually we only had uh when we. Passed out the resolution. Back in uh January, seventy-two thousand allocated for this, uh and that sends Suburbans or livestock.
Oh, yeah.
This is why it was a rebid. We bid out uh two, three weeks ago. Not a single dealer had any uh promises.
Um.
Uh, rebid, this one's actually a little bit more of a premium model, uh but it does cost about ten thousand more than it was previously, previously authorized. How that works, we still borrow the initial authorization, uh but what would happen is ten thousand in front of our transportation school budget. For the, the difference.
That'll cover the difference of what we didn't anticipate.
Yeah, basically the, the bus garage has their own equipment money, it's gonna come out.
Nice, but. We know it's expensive, it's. I mean, trucks are over a hundred thou- it's just outrageous, but we gotta do, we gotta do.
He was happy to get it.
Yeah, good.
That's not gonna um.[1729.81]
be too, that's not gonna be too much to come out of their account. Uh, it's not ideal, but again, we still get the aid back on the following year, um, but we'll make it work.
If we have to dip into like the maintenance department has a little bit of a bigger equipment budget, we would, we would buy something maybe they would need out of that.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, um. We are acknowledging the receipt of the July first, twenty twenty-one through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three Information Technology Audit Report two zero two three M dash one seven nine, June twenty twenty-four, as prepared by the New York State Comptroller's Office. Did everybody see that in board docs?
Yep.
Um, approve the memorandum of agreement between the Board of Education of the Whitney Point Central School District and the Chief Executive Boss, the Sir, dated July first, twenty twenty-four. May I have a motion? Thank you, Tom. And a second? Thank you, Chris. Any questions or comments?
Thank you to all involved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
I'm serious.
I know you're serious.
No, I'm serious.
Serious.
I don't.
Yes.
One footnote on the, um, audit report, I know you, you've got, you've got it early on and now it's public. We, uh, we had a request for an interview, we declined the interview, but we issued a statement, but I, um, contacted Bosie's and I said, you know, everything in this report has to do with your management.
Yes.
So they actually issued, you know, I mean, I sort of added some in, but they actually in that statement took responsibility.
Oh, good.
Yeah, so, um, it was nice to see that and they have, uh, committed to us that they're gonna, you know, make sure they make all corrections and they're gonna definitely be industry standard in all their protocols. I can even remember, there were a number of things they found that were things that we didn't even know that were happening.
Yeah.
You know, accounts that they use for different purposes that we didn't know. So that was good.
Good. So, so it was also put out that it wasn't just here. I mean, it was also implied in.
Yes.
Other school districts. That it wasn't just on us, that it was being done.
Right.
Okay.
And Joanne, did they happen to mention when they'll put those controls in place to minimize, I mean, you don't really.
They got rid of all of it. I mean, so what really the big vulnerability was that there were accounts that were like for like software sometimes.
Yeah.
And all of those things are possible access points that people, their vulnerabilities, right? Even if that account per se doesn't really have access to things, you still can, in theory, enter our system.
Get in there, yeah.
Right, and so that's the problem. So, um, yeah, they got rid of all those accounts that were just like not really posted in the account.
Right.
And then, um, also changed all of the, um, they had some, like, so there were some, there's some, for example, there's some voting employees who have to log into systems for all districts. And they were giving their password, change requirements were very minimal.
Yeah.
Probably because those people have to remember so many different passwords, they're fine, but that's not good practice.
No.
So that was, and they, they've changed.
They address that right away as well, okay. So they did make all of those changes as soon as
Yes.
they were notified, so they put those controls in place.
Our concern is moving forward.
Yes.
That we need to know what is happening moving forward and there isn't.
That they will continue to.
Okay.
Stay up to date now.
Not. Yeah, and they're, they're supposed to be meeting with us and, and giving us like
That's what I was.
everything on all of the, like, you know, the, the upgrades they've made and what the protocols are gonna be.
Okay.
Forward, yeah.
All right, is it like a monthly update?
They do meet with us monthly already, but they're supposed to have, we're supposed to have a specific meeting this summer regarding that.
To adjust the funders of the audit.
Yeah.
Excellent. Good job on that. Yeah. Nice to see they took some accountability there, that's great.
Did you have anything else for super attendance update?
I'm just gonna just tell you, I don't want to spend a lot of time and I've been briefly, but we're going to start to, start messaging out about, um, changes to stuff on procedures in the coming year and just letting it get enough on people's radar, like graduation go, I would read a little bit and, um, start and it will be, you don't have like a lot of information for parents on the reasons why and, you know, the research around this and it, it sort of helps that you, you can see it's more and more in the press and lots of big school districts are doing this too, so just so that, so that you know, in case you hear about it.
Now, is the plan to roll this out, uh, for twenty?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so that is the plan and, um, obviously we talked about it at our last board meeting and so there's some chatter. Have you received any negative chatter at this point? Not, I mean, I know schools out.
You know, a little lull.
Right, okay, fair enough, fair enough, I'm just, I just.
Which is the whole point to their putting information out, we will hopefully hear.
You will get, even those schools out, you expect to get.
Okay.
Okay.
Ask the questions. We will be getting.
This is news.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just wanted to ask. I had a thought.
Yeah.
Um. We're requiring students and staff. What about visitors?
Have phones?
Right, if visitors come into the building with phones, are we going to require them to have phones?
No.
I mean, we, we, yes, you know, they don't, they don't have their phones out when they're, so that's the big issue, it's just, you know.
It's just.
Yeah, no, you couldn't, you want to buy a yander's for them too? No, I mean, we have huge, we have a huge events with, you know.
No, 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 I don't, I don't mean like big events, I mean like somebody who comes into the school during the school day.
Oh, like gonna do a presentation or?
Or do a presentation or.
No, we're just talking this year. And no phone policy that they need to get it away and out of sight and they, they have to be good models.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I was hoping to hear.
Yeah.
Not necessarily that we would give everybody a yander.
Yeah.
Give me a yander.
And, and, uh, we just mentioned, uh, briefly the summer programming, I mean, this is the quiet week and here we go again, next week it's gonna get very busy again.
Yeah.
We're excited about that.
Summer program, is it four weeks?
Four weeks?
Four weeks, yeah. Four weeks, okay. I heard a lot of good things about it last year and all the kids love it, it's awesome that we do it every year, so great job on that and good luck and have fun.
And thank you to the live pool.
I was gonna ask.
Yeah, great. For letting us use the pool again.
Very nice.
And hopefully sometime in the fall.
Yes.
Next year.
We're at a pool party.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, um, I have a question. So with the yander, um, are there gonna be open meetings for parents and students to have conversation? Are we just saying this is the rule and how it's gonna be? I'm just kind of curious, how are we implementing this? Um, just kind of curious, I mean, I don't think parents have had any kind of.
Right, so that's what we're gonna start.
So is that what's gonna happen?
Yes, I will tell you though, while some people are gonna be upset, there are many parents who have said, please do something.
Well, I know, I, I get that, um, I, I, I mean, I do have a little concern about it. I don't have any concern in the middle school building, to be honest with you, sixth, seventh and eighth grade, I think it's a great place. I'm a little more concerned at the high school building where we're supposed to be starting to treat students as adults and getting into a pattern and respecting and things like that, but let's see what happens and let's see where we need to go and let's see what our students say because if the student is always putting their phone off and not using it, um, you know, should they be allowed to be respected for that responsibility? So I'm just asking, as we start looking at things, to just keep our mind open as we start to. But if they're already keeping their phone off and in their locker or in their backpack.
Won't matter.
Then it shouldn't be, I don't agree with that, so that's my opinion.
So I, I'll tell you also, employers and, um, you know, often saying to us, could you please get, I mean, these kids come to the workplace and don't know how to have their phones on.
I read that too.
You know, but they.
Young adults, middle adults, late adults, nobody knows how to use their phones.
My last thing is.
An addiction.
I really, really believe if we're gonna do this, I'm sorry, but teachers can't be using their phone to look at their emails, even if they're saying, that's my email, I don't care. Your phone is up, it's on for emergency purposes only. If students are expected to do everything with their Chromebook and laptop, then the teacher should be doing everything with their phone books and laptops.
They have laptops, right?
They do, the teachers. And so that has been my biggest chatter complaint.
Yeah.
And that the adults in these buildings were just as guilty as the students.
Yeah.
So I am concerned and I don't wanna be the enforcer, but I'm just saying, I'm concerned.
Yeah, sure, it's.
I just, I guess if I can just join, I know I've mentioned in the past for a lot of our policies and stuff that I've always agreed that within reason and where it does fit, the staff and the students should all be on the same, I mean, clothing, um, dress, all of it. And it seems like sometimes, and I know it comes back, that sometimes was a, a union thing, but I, I just think that we have to model good behavior and if it's good for one, it's good for all, so. And I know that I, I, I understand it, it's also a union thing, but it totally, I, I've said it forever, I really think that that has to be suffered, that has to be done or, or really pushed towards. So maybe if, if we give towards retirees, then it could be pushed and maybe there would be some, uh, collaboration with the union on some of these other items because I have, I'm sorry, but I see a lot of negotiations that kind of go one way.
Yeah, you're fun.
And I know where I've negotiated, they go one way, but it's not usually the good.
And I, I also wanna reiterate, as a person who has a medical device connected to their phone, yes, I have my phone out. I check to see if the alert is for my glucometer and that's it.
Yeah.
And so we also need to be cognizant that there are staff members and students who have the same situation and that accommodations have already been thought out of how that can happen.
Good point.
Yeah.
I think we make accommodations from time to time, so I, I appreciate that, but it's also.
I know, but for medical devices.
Oh, no.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Oh, I'm not saying that that should ever be not, not allowed.
Joey, and I applaud you and everybody that has taken this so seriously. This is one of the reasons I joined the board. Self-phones, vaping, bullying and lack of discipline are my top four. And I am excited, I've been going in year three, very excited to see this and looking forward to positive results.
This brings us to our second opportunity for comments from the public. Um, are there any further comments in line? Okay, there is nobody present from the public here in the building. Um, Board of Education comments? I don't have any comments, but I have a couple things I just wanted to check on. Um, workplace violence, um, I know that some of us are lucky enough to get those modules, but when you guys offer it, if anybody in the board wants to see them on, you do. If they could be made aware, that'd be great. While you guys do it in person, do you guys have access to the modules if the board members aren't seeing them or not? I don't need that module.
You do, yes.
We do, but I mean.
I didn't know, I didn't know if Bosie's has the modules too.
Back to rehab, we do have online training and we can give, I personally think that if you want people to take things seriously.
I meant for the board members who can't possibly come to that, if they wanted to see what is given.
Yes, we can do.
Yeah, because I know not everybody's in the workplace.
Being sure board members in the in-person training as well.
Or if you just give us like a heads up of what it is, sometimes we could make it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But some of us have to do it in our workplace anyhow.
Fair enough.
But not everybody does.
Yeah.
I just have that one because I think it's good for us to hear what the teachers are.
Oh, yeah, I think it's great.
Any chatter about the regions removal? I mean, I know it's probably gonna happen, do you know what will happen in the school year?
Well, we don't know that it's gonna happen, I mean.
I think it's gonna happen.
Well, I think, I mean, you can see in the language they're using, they wanna move very quickly on this, but there, and there's a bit of a timeline, I mean, there's a lot of questions. Everybody has a lot of questions about what's gonna happen, it's gonna look like, when's it gonna be even?
Because thinking like you have what, six days or seven days for tests, right?
For, for the regions.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, good question.
And I just wanna make one point with us looking at the other policy, we need to be very clear what retirement means. So, um, because retirement, like is, if somebody is still on a sub list, are they officially not retired and still an employee? Or, you know, I, I think we just need to think about that a little bit, so if you guys can look at that when you're looking at the policy, I think it'd be important for us to hear.
Thanks.
Be great.
Thank you.
Yep. Do we need to have any further discussion this evening, um, the non-residents do policy? Until we see something. Here, um, Stephanie, you're gonna let us know about the ninth?
Yes.
Okay. So just be on the lookout, got it? If, if everybody else is available on Tuesday.
Well, we saw it could be later.
Yeah, but you don't wanna do the meeting after eight o'clock.
I think some of us said it was okay. Uh, Aubrey, you said it was okay. No, I, I did too. No, no, I think Chris said she'd be okay later.
I, I, I will, I will see what I can do if, if I have to, possibly we can have the meeting at seven, that requires me only closing a little bit early. I will make whatever combinations I can in order so that we can have it as early as possible on Tuesday.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I just, I can't give you any answers.
I'll just be on the lookout on my emails, that's all.
Yes.
Make sure.
We could all come to the library.
Uh. You could.
We, they, you guys totally could.
Tom, you were in the moment, you were ready to say something, Tom.
No, I don't, I, I.
He's ready to throw something. Throw something.
No, I'm just trying, I, I, next week, work for me is insane next week and I'm really trying to see what will fit.
But Tom, if you're not available, we have enough.
No, 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 I, I can do Tuesday.
Oh, oh, gotcha.
Okay, my only other comment is, what is the exact date of our board retreat, please?
And right. And what time was it at?
Eight o'clock.
Six o'clock in the morning. It's eight AM?
They, then we would do like eight thirty or something like that?
We, uh, eight thirty at the earliest.
Okay, so eight. So August tenth at eight thirty AM. Did we, did we say eight thirty or nine? You tell me.
Usually we have eight thirty, get here, grab your coffee.
Okay.
Be able, be ready to start, no later than quarter of nine.
Okay, eight, okay. All right, and we don't need to bring anything, right? Just ourselves and a notebook, okay.
Can we have sitting chicken?
I love when Stephanie requests that, I would like to second that. So only time. Every year I have gotten city chicken being that was retreat and the city chicken from the red and white is delicious.
It's, and it's the only time I ever get it is at our retreat.
I'm gonna go with Stephanie.
It's.
We just never go out.
Oh.
I know, I never order it because I'm never down there.
It's good. So. Okay.
Do you guys have any comments? Now's your chance. You got, Vanny?
Yeah, good, no.
Hey, you know.
I'm all for a city chicken.
I just wanna comment on something. We have had a lot of board members start their first meeting at the reorg meeting, which I think is the absolute worst meeting to start your tenure at.
I would agree.
And normally it takes two to three meetings before any board member speaks up and does a motion or a second. Aubrey did not her first and Ben hit on his first, so thank you. Sometimes I feel like the crickets are going when I'm waiting for somebody to do a motion or a second, so.
Thank you for trying to take turns.
That's why I'm giving you all buzzers. It's gonna light up when it's your turn. Anyway, we do need to, um, recess the public meeting for executive session.
Hang on, I got one announcement, in case, if anybody wants to go to the leadership conference, it is the seventeenth and eighteenth, right, July?
So I'm going, just so you guys know that.
Oh, and Shuway, Chris, and you always give us a fabulous update, so I look forward to it.
Yeah.
It's all, it's a short phrase. She does a good job. Thank you.
Conferences they have on the hundred.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay, so eight fifty-one to hear discussion on personnel?
I don't need an executive.
Oh, I thought you said you need one after.
No, no.
Oh.
Not before, but after.
No, we got time.
All right, so we are actually going to.
Nor after.
We're going to adjour, adjourn the public meeting at eight fifty-one, may I have a motion?
Second.
Chris.
Aye.
Thank you, Tiana, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
This is a record.